In the same fashion, and it's not as rewarding. That hurts.
It was sort of eerie walking around in here every day, and there's nothing going on. Employees have been furloughed. You know, originally when we shut down, it was basically a skeleton crew. It was myself and my operations director and security to maintain the building. But we're seeing a decrease in tourism. And also, I mean, you know, as well as I do, in this area, we have a lot of conventions. We have a lot of kids athletic events and tournaments, and all of those things have been canceled. The previous back to school shopping extravaganza that people went out and spent all this money on new clothes and shoes for their kids, they're still spending, but they're not spending like they would if the kids were going back to school. It's going to be a gradual recovery. I don't, I think it's going to take another, another six months to a year.
Tonight, people packed into Uptown Charlotte for the first night of Speed Street.
This is one of Charlotte's most popular events of the year. Tens of thousands of people are expected every day. Race fans are excited for a fun weekend.
Coming into 2020, we were set to have the best year we had in a long time. We had a ton of work at the Super Bowl in Miami. The Daytona 500 has never gone better for us. So January, February, we're just, you know, shot right out of a cannon. And, uh, you know, March killed that momentum pretty quick. And it's going to take us a while. You know, I don't think January of 21 will have us back in January of 20 standards. Happen to go through that for any small business and or regardless of the scale. Very difficult, very emotional, very stressful. But as the, as the person leading the organization, as stressful as they feel like it might be for them, it's exponentially worse on the person than even more negative than thanks.
So I apologize. I apologize for the delay. It's much more impactful when their mouths are matching their words. But it's just got a, it pulls a lot of bandwidth. So, um, I hope you can see, um, the video is quite sobering. It's one of those that when I watched it and I've been into these businesses, really it hit home that it's still happening. And while we are appreciative to the governor for moving us into 2.5, which is going to allow Great Wolf Lodge to open on September 17th. And, um, it increases the number of our outdoor activities to 50. It still leaves a lot of our partners, uh, struggling with where we need to be. And we're not asking you to do anything other than continue to be the wonderful advocates that you all are of our industry. And, um, just a reminder of how important our industry is. And I think we have a slide presentation also that has some numbers in it. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Market Street Studios for, um, for helping us with that video. It was, um, they did a great job in a short amount of time. And he'll probably be posting it on his, um, his Instagram page and his Facebook page. So if you want to watch it without all the delay. Are we getting our presentation up?
Do you have the rest of the slide deck, Lauren?
I do, working on it.
Thanks.
While we're waiting, I will say that is probably the most depressing video that I have seen in recent memory. We know all those things, but to see it demonstrated so clearly and to realize that, and I never thought about the fact that this is the first time since it opened that Embassy Suites has been devoid of, of, of people. And that, that's, that's pretty haunting.
I will tell you, Steve, um, when we shot that video was in the middle of the day. And there was literally five people in that building. And it was very eerie and sickening and sad to walk in and a place that was so vibrant. Now, we are optimists, we're forever optimists in this industry and we're resilient. And we'll come back from this. I, I feel certain, but we're not going to come back without, um, some impacts. You know, there are going to be some of our hospitality partners who aren't going to make it and are not going to be able to stay in business out of this. And, you know, we're here to help and, and do as much as we can as soon as we can. So this is kind of our economic impact fact sheet that we provide to you. And again, these are 2019 numbers. We won't have the doom and gloom numbers until later on. And so I don't need to read this to you, but you all can look through this and see how the tourism industry has continually been a, an upward graph since 2000. And even in a down economy, we did well until this. And, and we're not trying to say that we're the only industry that's been affected by this. Everyone's been affected by this and we understand that. But as, as we talked about the other day, while we, we embrace our whole community, it's our job to take care of and advocate for the tourism industry. And so that's why we're here today. And I'm going to turn it over to John and he's going to talk about some of our numbers.
All right, Lauren, next slide. What we're going to get into in the slides that are coming up, we're going to give you some, how the hotels have been performing. So if you look at this chart, this is our occupancy since we, it takes back to March 7th, when we were running almost 70%. And you, that is a pretty strong number in our industry. You can see how quickly it kind of fell off, fell off the table, so to speak. But we gradually been coming back since the low of about 28% in April, since April 11th. We're running about 50% now. And you can see that's been pretty consistent over the summer. So we are running in that 50% mark. We're very thankful, our limited service properties up in the Indianapolis area, some down here at Exit 49 have done very well with transient business, some construction business, some hospital business. So we're very thankful for those because they definitely kept the industry going. The next slide looks at average daily rates, what we call ADR. And you can see we're running near $94 when, before all this started. And we're running around $77 now. All the economists predict this will be the last to come back. There is a lot of demand and once people are able to travel again, they're going to want to travel. They might travel differently. And Donna is going to get into how we're going to attack that later. But the rates will probably be a little bit slower to come back as we, as we, as we move along. On the next slide, just to give you an idea of this, the health of your CVB financially. The left column is actually where we ended up in revenue, right? At 4.1 million. And then you can look on the column on the right and how, that's how it compared to our budget. So we, we fell off $1.7 million and that basically happened in about a three month timeframe. So as we started to fall off our budgeted revenues, we had to react extremely fast to make sure we, we sustain the health of this organization financially. And so you can see how we compared to budget on those other main columns. The largest fall off to budget were sales and marketing. We have gone dark and we've from since the middle of March. And so until people can really travel again, we're not doing much of anything at all. And so we just tried to, to save as much as we could. That affected staff. Donna will talk about that in a second. And we can see at the very bottom, we ended up, even though we lost 1.7 million in revenue, we got that down to a net loss of $276,000. You can see in the blue there, we actually had a surplus at the end of last year, 233. So those, those two, those two transitions right there between a loss of 276 surplus of last year, only a net loss of 42,000 over the last year. So we've gotten plenty enough money for our, to meet our reserve requirements that we have as an organization and will be prepared going forward. The next slide, I'm going to give back to Donna. It talks about some of our group business and she can talk about the leads and what we've lost COVID.
Yeah, thank you. As you can see, these numbers are significant. These are the groups that have, have canceled and that we have lost due to COVID. They continue to come in. Some of these, you know, have tried to rebook. Our problem now is that the months that they've tried to rebook in are all full and there's no room for them. So we're losing them to other destinations because of that. And you can go to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit about marketing. What we've been doing is working on our recovery campaign. As John said, we did go dark, so we are not advertising at this time. It wouldn't do any good. People cannot travel. There are certain things that we can do for free that we've been doing. This is one, uh, opportunity that came to us. Barbie from the chamber and Mike Downs actually sent this to me. And we took advantage of it. And it's a, it's a, an opportunity where the Ava brothers performed at Red Rocks. And they were redoing that and re showing it during the same time or the same timeframe that they were doing their concert here at the Speedway. And so we had a brief, um, window of opportunity to be able to put an ad in here or a short commercial. And here's the, the challenge with UNC TV is you can't tell people to come visit. You can't say you're the best. So we were limited in what we could do, but we had already shot some video and B-roll of Jim Avett and we utilized this. We'll try, Lauren, if you don't mind the next slide and try to play it. We'll see if it makes any sense, if it plays for us. It's a very short spot.
Songs. My name is Jim Avett and I live in Cabarrus County in North Carolina. I've written some of my very best songs here. Most people that come to see me want to know what the Avett Brothers daddy is like. You see me around, be sure to say hello.
Again, very short. It was not a long, uh, period of time. And again, there's a delay in this, so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But we, it was an opportunity that we captured and I think it, it bode well for us. And in the map that you saw beforehand, um, you could see it played all across the state. So just putting our name out there a little bit, getting people interested in maybe coming back when things open up for us. And we can go to the next slide, Lauren.
My name is Jim.
We're very fortunate to have the Avets here in our community. And, um, you know, kudos, well, I have a second. Kudos to, uh, the Speedway for really, um, thinking outside the box and being able to do some things, uh, when they really didn't think they could. And pulling off a successful in-person concert that was sold out. We had people here from all over the country. Some of them had to drive in and turn around and drive back home to meet their state's requirements of having to, to be quarantined in order to, um, to attend. But the Avets were, were fortunate. They have a great following and thankful that the Speedway and, and they could work together to do that. How has this affected our organization? As John said before, we were quick to react and not the way we wanted to react. We were not eligible for any of the PPE money. So because of our, our C status. And so we were not able to garner any dollars to be able to keep our staff in place. We tried and we kept them as long as we possibly could, but we've gone from a staff of 21 to approximately 11. And so this is our new org chart. And you will see that we have a couple of open positions where we had a couple of employees, three employees actually, who have left the organization on their own to pursue other opportunities. And those positions will remain as part of the overall organization, but they are frozen until such time where demand allows us to bring them back or fill the position itself. So you can kind of see that, um, I answer directly to the board of directors. And then John is the executive VP and we, we have our accounting coordinator. And my administrative assistance position, we did away with that position. So Jessica is kind of, has so graciously stepped up and is helping us with board, board of directors, uh, things and items that we have to do. And then the sales department, um, we have two employees in. And one of the employees, a salesperson is still on furlough and we will make the decision in October if we're going to move forward with bringing that position back or not. And that will totally be based on demand. And right now we just don't have the demand to be able to do that. Our marketing and communications, um, we actually moved Sarah Bear from our partnership department over to the marketing department to kind of fill a void. And our marketing department is still intact. And our partnership and visitor services is, is Gail currently. And the visitor center is not open right now to the public. We have all helped people who have pulled up in the parking lot to make sure that any visitors that did come by are helped. But, um, we just don't have enough foot traffic to warrant paying someone full time to work out in the visitor center. Once, once the Great Wolf Lodge opens up on the 17th, we will gauge the, the foot traffic. And at such time, um, when we deem necessary, we will bring someone and hire someone back in to that position to run the front, uh, house in the visitor center. Uh, I think that was our last slide, is it not? I think so. And I again, want to thank each and every one of you for always being advocates for our industry and being supportive. We are back to, uh, I came here 11 years ago and, and we had 12 staff members and, uh, our budget was much less. And we have exceeded that. We are now lower than what we were 11 years ago. But, um, I feel certain that once the economy opens back up and we can encourage people to travel safely, that they are eager and hungry to travel and make memories with their friends. And we're going to encourage them to come to our wonderful community to do so.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Donna. Does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make to Donna or John? Well, thank you. As I said, I think the, the presentation and the video does an excellent job of truly making folks understand just, just where we are and how we've been impacted by the situation. And being one of those business owners that has, has been completely shut down for six months, I can certainly sympathize with what we have seen. Very much appreciated the, the video with Jim Avett. I spoke with Greg Walter earlier and complimented him on the, the review in the Charlotte Observer about the Avett Brothers concert at Charlotte Motor Speedway. Could not have possibly been any more positive in any way. I think you talked, was just totally positive about the safety, the attention to the tail, as well as the entertainment. So it makes, makes me even prouder of our community. And, and so thank you all for, for, for what you're weathering during this time. And, and I agree, we will be back and we will be stronger, uh, no doubt. So thank you.
That's certainly, thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 3.4, Strategic Fire Study Plan Update. And we are delighted to have Steve Langer to introduce that portion of our meeting. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the summary of our fire study to you this evening. Back in September of last year, at the request of County Manager Downs, we started on a journey to have the fire strategic plan done. We had a kickoff meeting in February with our fire chiefs to start that process. Of course, COVID did put us a little behind, but, uh, we have found ways to use technology like we, we are now to keep the study moving forward. This afternoon, we have Chief Greg Grayson with us. He is our lead consultant for the fire study. Chief Grayson has a group of team members with him as well. So I would like to just turn it over to him and let him get started with his presentation.
Good afternoon and certainly thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. We thank you for having the foresight to engage in looking at your fire service delivery system and being able to learn more about it. And we certainly appreciated the opportunity to learn, uh, more about Cabarrus County. We are, a number of our staff members are with us today who worked on this project. We have Chief David Bullins, Chief Frank Blackley, Chief Wes Green and Robert McNally with us today. We have about five other staff members that are not with us that did work on the project. And we also have about 10 other subject matter experts that assisted in this endeavor as well. We want to extend a thank you especially to Mr. Langer and Mr. Smith. But you also had a number of people who assisted in, from Cabarrus County in the fire service. Chief Burnett with Midland, Chief Johnson, Odell, Patrick Bergeron from Northeast Board of Directors, Jake Williams, the Concord Chief, and also three of your captains from Cabarrus County, Captain Mills, Captain Yuri and Captain Jackson. So we thank them all for being willing to assist in this important endeavor. We serve North Carolina. Our focus is North Carolina. We, we work Murphy to Manio. All of us are retired fire chiefs and we really focus on trying to build support and sustain service delivery systems in North Carolina. We're the North Carolina League of Municipalities Fire Service Consulting Provider. And what that means is to any municipality and county government, they can come to us and ask for assistance with anything in fire service, uh, fire protection issues. And we provide those directly or we have affiliate agreements to be able to do that. So NC Fire Chiefs is very focused on North Carolina and providing service throughout the state. We have assisted a number of jurisdictions across North Carolina. Here's just a few of those that we have, have worked with here recently. Similar studies to what you have done or executive search and selection or station locations, any of those types of, of needs and issues. We try to be very versatile in all of those things. Much of what we do is very focused around continuous improvement. Where are we today? What can we do to improve, make improvements? We operate, we reanalyze and we continue to move forward. So the information we will share with you today is very much around continuous improvement and certainly focused on that as our, our core part of what we do. We are very honored to serve and assist Cabarrus County in this endeavor. Our teams worked diligently on this and as you've just had this presentation, looking at some of the impacts of, of COVID, your fire service has been impacted as well. But your folks have been very diligent to continue to work with us and, and move forward in this environment. We were asked to depict a state of the volunteer service here today in 2020. We started this pre-COVID. We're ending this in the middle of COVID, I guess one would say. So, uh, your fire service has been very active and, and in demand during that entire time. And I want to just say your staff has worked diligently much through time we were working on this. Some of your county staff were, were literally working in the emergency operations center seven days a week and, and made time and attention to continue to keep this moving forward. And for that, we're very appreciative. We were asked to look at the greatest gaps in the overall delivery system. Tried to project based upon information and data, what the future would look like as the fire protection system in the county evolves and changes. We wanted to look at that forecast over a three to five year period. So many things are changing within our environment that that's really a responsible time period to look at. So we've tried to identify things that are short term and things that should be worked on in the next three to five years. We were asked to identify alternative funding mechanisms as well. And, um, things that, uh, looking based upon what North Carolina statute would allow, what are alternatives that Cabarrus County could consider? We were looked, asked to look at the pros and cons of service district for Cabarrus County. And I'll speak to that just a little bit later in the presentation as well. We're asked to look at any service enhancement opportunities that were presented. And to do that, we've utilized a geographical information system. And a specialist is with us here today with my team. He looks at how does the computer system make determinations and recommendations? And we've harnessed that technology and that ability. We've looked, had been asked to look at where there is not closest unit response and alternatives and recommendations relative to that. We were asked to look at what was the standard of coverage? Or you could also call that the level of service that your fire service is, is being provided across Cabarrus County, particularly in the unincorporated areas. We were also asked to look at how the national standards reflected in Cabarrus County? And if there were any areas of redundancy coverage within the county? The standards across the, the United States, there's a standard based upon the, an urban, more urban or municipal standard. And there's a separate standard that's more rule standard. And we have applied the rule standard to your unincorporated areas of Cabarrus County. We were asked to look at comparing the existing resource areas to the closest station response. Are you getting closest station response? Where are changes needed with that? We were asked to conduct a mechanical evaluation of all of your fire apparatus. With all of your contracting departments, there's quite a bit of apparatus there. We were asked to look at that mechanically and evaluate those, those pieces of apparatus. We were asked to look at the staffing of the fire marshal's office. You know, Cabarrus County has grown so much, uh, in, in recent years. We were asked to look at that and compare that to the appropriate industry standards for fire marshal's office staff. And also analysis of the fire marshal office operations. And again, ways that, that there could be continuous improvement in that, including your squad unit. We were asked to evaluate your contract and make some recommendations. We work with a lot of counties across North Carolina and many counties were trying to update their contract. And we have brought some, what we would call best practices of that. Some of the, the trends and models that are current in 2020 and made recommendations relative to that. And we've also were asked to look at the staffing grant system that you currently use and make recommendations related to that. So those, those were the things that we were asked to do in this process. And again, it would not have been possible without a dedication, commitment of your county staff and very much about the engagement and assistance and cooperation of your fire service and fire service leaders throughout Cabarrus County. We did some stakeholder feedback and we were able to speak with your fire chiefs before the thrust of the pandemic. And that was very helpful. You are very blessed to have some very engaged leaders within your fire service. We asked them to talk to us about what strengths of the system were. Where are the gaps? Where are missed opportunities? And if you don't make changes, what would the threats be to the system? But we went further than that. We also talked to your firefighters. While chiefs, uh, certainly provided excellent information and gave us great quality and direction. We did want to reach out and include your firefighters and hear their perspectives. We also put some information out as an indicator to see what the public perception was of the fire service within Cabarrus County, uh, through a public survey. And we'll speak to each of those. Your fire chiefs recognize that, that it's your leadership. Your fire chiefs recognize that that it's your leadership of the fire service in Cabarrus County. You have a number of strengths. But let me say to you that that of our 100 counties across North Carolina, you are blessed to have a good automatic aids system. Some counties do not have as much cooperation and support across the county as we saw in Cabarrus County. And that's an excellent benefit that just to make you aware. You have departments helping each other. Your chiefs saw that, we saw that, and you know, that does need to be noted first and foremost. That's so essential in the fire service. They talked about the funding systems that you have. And other strengths being that you can engage part-time staffing. One of the major trends happening within the fire service is we have for many years, I started as as a volunteer over in Cleveland County. So did many people in many years past. We're seeing fewer and fewer volunteers today. That means that there's more dependence upon career staffing and more dependence upon part-time staffing. Your chiefs in Cabarrus County said that this the availability of part-time staffing is something that you have that's a benefit. Later, you're going to hear that that's a concern as well. But it's important to note that you are blessed to have the ability to hire off-duty Concord, Charlotte, or other people that can assist you. The pride in the fire service was recognized. Junior firefighter program, have some departments that are using social media. You do have a staffing grant program you're providing. The chiefs also says the quality of services that we are receiving and providing in Cabarrus County is significant, and and the quality is very good. And they also were very appreciative for efforts to enhance benefits for volunteers. So you've got a lot of good things going within the fire service in the county. And again, your your chiefs were very engaged in in helping to provide this feedback. They did see gaps, and as any good leader is going to look at the things that needs is work in progress and needs attention. And while those part-time personnel are certainly valuable, they also recognize that you're coming from the same pool. And what that may mean is that if you have a significant storm coming to the area and you're you're very dependent upon part-time people, that they may be called to Concord, or they may be called to Charlotte or other career jobs and may not be available for part-time purposes. And your chiefs recognize that. The challenging and attracting and keeping adult firefighters. And we've got some recommendations around recruitment and retention to help with that. And the chiefs recognize that the culture of volunteerism is changing. There were several items that chiefs noted about communication systems and processes and how the increasing need for funding. That is in all 100 counties in North Carolina and really across the nation as fire service is shifting more and more to away from some areas and volunteers. But the need for an apparatus replacement plan, the staffing levels, and then, you know, the difficulty in providing some specialized services just due to the number of personnel that's available were the areas the chiefs recognized. They did also identify some opportunities and the need to try to reach to young young folks before they made a career choice. And you have a great vehicle to do that in Cabarrus County with the Concord High School Program. Your your program there is known statewide. If you didn't know that, it was one of the first and then had has had great leadership and is really recognized across the state as as a model for others. And the the chiefs recognize that. Using more technology to address some of your communications challenges and strengthening the support system, squad and EMS support systems as well. Some threats, if changes aren't made, the concern about staffing levels. One of your your chiefs said, I look behind us and I don't see other people coming. When we're gone, I don't see other people coming behind us. It was one of the the comments made. But having trained and qualified firefighters available, certainly they determine that it's a threat. And then the growth, your your growth and your call volume and the increasing need to have specialized services as well was recognized. We we surveyed your firefighters. We did that electronically. We had about 100 responses. We would say to you that 75% of them replied that they were either satisfied or very satisfied with the current level of fire service. And I think that really speaks to the pride that your firefighters take in the the job that they provide. Many volunteers, many of the the part-time personnel, that they're they know that they're providing a really good service, and 75% of them recognize that in that response. Many words about the positive feedback your firefighters provided, dedicated brotherhood, reliable, their word pride again, quality, professional, loyal. So I want to to leave with the understanding that you do have so many good things happening within the fire service in Cabarrus County. They did reflect some communication concern, leadership and support concern, the recruitment again of new volunteer firefighters from your your fire service survey, some under concerns about being understaffed, disjointed, and some rivalry. And then there was clearly a lack of understanding about your supplemental staffing squad. You are really new into that program in comparison to some other counties, and we have tried to address that throughout the study as well. But those were the responses your firefighters gave when we we listened to their feedback. We also put feedback out to the general community, and a link was distributed among multiple methods throughout the county. We received 360 responses, and we asked folks to identify the area they're coming from. Most all of your districts had responses. And of those 360, and we would say in comparison to to other studies that we have done, that that was a significant number of responses. We would say 68% of the people who did respond had interacted with their fire department in the past five years. They'd had a response call or had interaction. So a significant number of the people who did respond recognized the value their fire service provided to them. Of that group of 360, 86% said that they were satisfied or very satisfied with the level of service they'd received. So these are folks who actually received services and and acknowledged that they were very pleased with that. 96% of those that responded reported that fire protection was a very important factor to economic development. We know that economic development is important to Cabarrus County. Economic development is important in North Carolina. And your residents who replied to this said, yes, fire providing fire protection as a core component of local government and public safety is very important to economic development. Of those that responded, 84% felt like their fire services were effective or very effective. And 87% reported they felt safe or very safe in their homes relative to the response. So very good feedback from from your residents throughout the county. Shifting gears, we were asked, as we said earlier, to look at the mechanical evaluation of your apparatus. We have a picture here of a pump panel on a fire engine, and it's a rather complicated piece of equipment. So in doing so, we wanted to to look at the current mechanical condition, and we provided individual reports and recommendations, station by station, truck by truck. We really, we went onsite and were able to do this very early in the process before the pandemic caused issues for us there, and we were able to do that. We did a mechanical evaluation of 44 different pieces of fire apparatus. You can see the breakdown here of what we looked at. You had seven of those that had exceeded the life expectancy of of 25 years, or about 15%, which in versing that, you've got, you know, about 85% that's within its life expectancy. There were a few issues with tire life that we acknowledged and and made note of. There were some that were on brake issues that we noted and mechanical concerns on some. And many of those items that we were able to identify, departments went ahead and began taking corrective action on. But part of this evaluation was to help in developing a a longer-term apparatus replacement plan. And we've been able to hopefully give them some feedback that will be helpful to that. And so we were able to look at that plan and that will feed into a capital improvement plan that you'll be able to utilize moving forward. There's a significant amount of this project that was around the geographical information system. We want to also reach out and thank you to your county staff who helped with providing this information. This list, as you see here before you, were the specific deliverables that we were charged to do within the GIS system. And all of the maps that we have created are being provided back to Cabarrus County as well so that you can can build upon this and and use them, use that moving forward as you continue to to plan and monitor your service delivery system. From that GIS analysis, 98.6 of your past incidents were within an eight-minute travel time of a fire station. And let me say to you, that's really good. We're working with another county in North Carolina and did a similar type analysis. And theirs is about half that. It's a much more rural county. So we would say to you that that the majority of your incidents are occurring within an eight-minute travel time. And why is eight minutes important? When you look at someone who's having a an imminent medical emergency, a cardiac arrest, or they're bleeding, having a bleeding situation, some type of critical life-threatening medical event, that time mark is so very important. In a fire situation, you your fire will move beyond the room of origin into a the remaining part of the structure in in that time or less. And so that's a a national standard benchmark of that eight-minute time period. We were asked to do some projection of expansion of where municipal boundaries might be changing looking ahead and how that might impact the the workload of your private nonprofit corporation fire departments that you contract with. And we also were able to determine that your system overall, your automatic aid system in Cabarrus County is very effective. There were some issues and concerns around Mount Mitchell and some challenges that they're facing, and we noted those. But overall, your your system throughout the county is very, very effective. Also, your boundaries are generally in alignment. We don't always see that. You're using a you're using rural fire tax district and insurance districts today. And we don't always see that those those areas are in alignment. Yours are generally in alignment. There is some area the computer identified down around your Flow Store, Midland, and Harrisburg area that can be revisited, and we've identified specifically what that is. But those could be revisited. But overall, your boundaries are in pretty good shape, meaning that your closest station generally is responding. And that's reflected when you're seeing that that almost 99% of your incidents are within an eight-minute travel time. But we did identify some areas that could could benefit from further review and what those might look like. We were also asked to look at the future and projected stations and let the GIS system or computer system provide feedback on what the effective response and what the best options might be there. Shifting gears once again. Statistical analysis, this was a huge part of the the report. And as you get that report, you're going to see a significant portion of this was around statistical analysis. We we did a lot more with this than than I think we've really been able to do with with many counties that we work with. We were looking at all of your incident response data. And we were able to calculate what's determined is the 90th percentile of what your performance is, meaning nine out of 10 calls, this is the level of service that we would expect to receive. And so you as elected officials, if you get a constituent that says, well, what's my level of service? You could say that you have a response time, for example, of eight minutes or less 90% of the time. And that's the model that's used across the country to determine what level of service. But to do that required a significant amount of data. And what we've been able to do for you is provide not just the data today in 2020 and the information that that went up through 2019, because you haven't completed this this time period. But we've given you a tool that can continue to be used and look at that data set over time. So we were able to to look at that response data that was collected up through July of last year and really closely analyze that. We used a product called Power Pivot, and that that tool was used to create evaluation for each and every one of your contracting departments. So we were able to do those individually. And for each of those departments, we provided the demand for service, the response times, the analysis of their structure fires, the mutual and automatic aid that was received and provided. And we were also able to determine a standard of cover or level of service for each of your departments that you contract with. And that's that's quite a task to do. And so we're we're very pleased with the statistical analysis and feel like that will be very helpful to your county staff in advancing the system and to your fire chiefs throughout the county in advancing the system. For peer review process, we we got into this component within the pandemic. And we typically try to pull everyone together in one place for that. We were not able to do that here. So we, what did we do? We adapted and we overcame. We split up the separate areas into separate components, and we addressed each area. And then we pulled it all back together. So it ended up being much more, much more time-consuming, much more involved. But we had good, good help. Your chiefs in the county stepped up and helped and and sat in on every one of these groups. We pulled subject matter experts throughout the state and even other states to help us. And they did a really good job in each of these areas. So we're going to touch on each of these components for you within the peer review. We find this is just an extremely valuable way to look at what you're doing, how you're doing it, and ways that you can improve that's very specific for Cabarrus County. You know, great, great ideas happen in other places. That's good, but how does it apply to us here in Cabarrus County? And so this peer review system really was able to do that. We looked at your Fire Marshal's Office as a functional area and looked at all the aspects. We had the retired fire marshal from both Asheville and Wilmington that really dug into this and looked at all aspects of the office. We interviewed your zoning officials and staff of your municipalities that you work with, the county as well as municipalities. We looked at how that compared to national standards. With some strengths we saw were that you have very experienced and well-trained staff, and you have very strong relationships that do exist. There is a lot of workload to be done. You are very much a growing county, and there's a lot of workload and availability of those staff sometimes was identified as a gap. Opportunities is more risk reduction with your squad personnel. And opportunities, we we have outlined what some of those might be and included that. Some threats, employee turnover, particularly for that around your your squad operation and and the need to make some enhancements there, and we identify those for you. Some need for additional policies and your emergency management work. You know, this this pandemic situation certainly has has highlighted how involved and engaged your staff has been in helping to to manage the overall emergency situation for the county. We have provided about 20 recommendations for improvement under your Fire Marshal's Office, and there were four priority recommendations. But again, a very, very thorough overview of everything happening in your Fire Marshal's Office and comparing that with both the best practices in North Carolina as well as national standards. We looked specifically at your squad. It is, that is an overall a newer program for Cabarrus County. And we reached out and and pulled folks from other counties in North Carolina that are using a similar type operations, such as Forsyth and Guilford. And we pulled Wake and other counties that that have been using these types of models. And we were able to see that that you're really exactly where you should be in that that you your system is newer than some of the others. They have worked through similar growth, growing pains, if you will, over the years. But looking at your system, we made some recommendations that will hopefully help enhance that. But a supplemental staffing unit is being funded through the general fund is certainly a recognized best best practice in North Carolina, especially for urban counties and urbanizing counties. And our team looked at recommendations, both short term and long term. We looked at the duties and responsibilities of your your squad unit, the importance of designating a lead person. This communication piece, particularly with your fire service in the county, certainly could be enhanced. And and we go further to say just not just the communication, but interacting and having more engagement between the squad staff and the departments in the county and the the need to do that. Scripts, helping to strengthen the squad personnel, diminishing some reliance on the part-time personnel in order to build continuity and consistency and reliability as well. We've looked at some items about the station location for your squad and some recommendations with the vehicle, some vehicle improvements, as well as some of the funding adjustments that may be needed over time. But again, we had some some excellent feedback within this. You had a chief from your county as well as folks that are leading parallel programs in their North Carolina counties and our fire fire staff as well. And hopefully, we have given some information and and feedback that will be helpful there. Recruitment and retention, just it's a huge issue. Recruitment and retention, just, it's a huge issue. It's really the number one issue in, if you went to your other ninety-nine counties in North Carolina, that you're going to hear something very similar. The trend is certainly more career and part-time personnel, and, and it's not just a North Carolina thing, but a national thing. We reached out to specialists here in North Carolina. The State Fire Chiefs Association has received a grant and is working on that with staff persons. We reached to the International Association of Fire Chiefs and brought in a person to help with that. We brought in some from Henrico County, Virginia, as well as they have been experiencing so much of a transition in, from, from career in, and volunteer and part-time and how all that, all those moving parts. So we had a great team of people that, that looked with it, looked at this and engaged members of the fire service in Cabarrus County as well. I want to show you a, a chart on the next slide that really I think is important, you as policymakers, to see this and recognize that this is a, an important takeaway from today. And it's that the number of firefighters is responding to the structure fires over this period of time we looked at from FY thirteen, fourteen through eighteen, nineteen, has decreased really by a significant number. And that's not unusual in other areas. You're not decreasing more than other areas. We just want you to recognize that, that your, your structure fires continue, your need for staffing continues, and as your system evolves, there will certainly be a need to look more and more at your staffing and staffing levels. We provided twelve short-term recommendations, training outreach, using some non-traditional roles for volunteers and more family involvement were just a few of those. And then a longer-term recommendation, we, we encourage you to look for some grant opportunities through a federal grant program to help with a volunteer coordinator for the county, recognition, live-in programs that could have potential in Cabarrus County. And that's where, for example, firefighters have a stay in a fire station and live in a fire station intern for being ready to respond to calls. And we provided some examples and best practices that other counties in North Carolina are using. This, this is the chart that I spoke of. This is just an example of, of period of time that we looked at from thirteen, fourteen through eighteen, nineteen. And this chart's structure fires, as I say, occur. And the, the takeaway from that is the, the trend line, if you will, the trend line, the red line that you see here, just indicates that that number over time is diminishing. Okay, that number over time is diminishing. And again, not different than other areas, but this is Cabarrus County. This is your structure fires, and this is what your data is saying, and we want you to, to grasp that and recognize that as you grow, as your county grows, as your county becomes more complex, as your number of incidents incur, as the, the trends within the fire service occur, so does the trends with your staffing level on structure fires. We were asked to look at tax districts and funding. First, let me note insurance districts. So we are very much advocates of the closest fire station respond, and we feel like that's an essential element in all cases. You have insurance districts that are rated from class nine to class one in Cabarrus County. So you have almost the full gamut. The insurance rating system is designed at class ten, is a level with no protection. Class one's considered an optimal level. It's kind of an inverse-type system. But the type of, the, the level of your insurance rating determines how much insurance premium property owners pay. Generally in North Carolina, there's reductions from, from nine to eight, eight to seven, and seven to six, certainly. Businesses and commercial properties enjoy reductions all the way down to class one. And we provide some information in that. You're probably already aware of that, but you do have that full range within Cabarrus County today, and we would recommend that you really focus on those class nine departments and place some emphasis. One of the greatest gains that can be gained, improvements for your residents is from moving from that class nine to eight, as an example, and eight to seven. Those are some of the areas that, that we would focus on. When we look at some other North Carolina counties, they're really working to, to get those rural areas into as low a class as possible, and we encourage you to continue to do that here for Cabarrus County. North Carolina General Statutes provide several different methods to fund fire protection in North Carolina, and all are used. There are those that use rural fire tax districts just as you do, and Cabarrus County is using those today, and many counties still use rural fire tax districts. There, there are challenges with rural districts in, in North Carolina. However, you do have a local bill that gives you some relief to some of those restrictions. So that's a, a very positive thing, and, and because of that, that flexibility that you have in a local bill, you're continuing to use those effectively today. As we look forward, another model that many counties are using and, or moving to are service districts. Service districts can be the entire unincorporated area of the county, or they can be regional service districts. But just as statutes allow service districts for many purposes, from sanitation to water to other things, they will allow service district for fire protection. And we're seeing throughout North Carolina that more and more counties are shifting to service districts in order to address some of the, the challenges with cost that are occurring in the fire service, not just in, in equipment costs, but the bigger pieces is staffing and personnel cost. North Carolina will, will allow you to use general fund appropriation. There's only a couple counties in North Carolina that, that utilize only general fund, but you certainly can support your fire protection delivery system with general fund as you do and as most counties do in North Carolina. Your current rural fire tax districts, they have a, a range, pretty broad range of six cents to fifteen cents. When we look at, when we look at the, the mean average in North Carolina, it's about ten cents overall in North Carolina, so you, you vary closely to that, and many are changing relative to higher staffing costs. Our team has looked at your system, your call demand, your load, your personnel, all the data points that you have discussed earlier, and we would recommend to you that long-term, we would recommend to you planning a service district for your county, and that will take some time to work through, but that will be a more sustainable, more flexible system that can hopefully move Cabarrus County into, to future years. It's not an urgent and imminent need by no means, but a, a model that would allow you to move towards a service district and setting that up and working through that would be a, a good model. If you do that, the involvement of your municipalities in the county will be very important, whether they want to be a part of that or they do not. We see counties in North Carolina that some municipalities desire to be a part, some not, and we've put information in report about pros and cons for all of those. But as we move forward, as we talk about that growth, service demand needs, and the staffing changes that are, are happening in the fire service, we recommend looking at a service district. I want to, to emphasize that service districts, again, do not have to be a county-wide area. It might be more regional-based, based upon need or the area that is served. There are quite a few counties that do those as well. As elected officials, looking at policy decision, we would say to you that, look at, do you want to move towards a, a more unified service district model and move away from the rural district model? That's certainly a policy decision. We're, we would recommend that you look at the service district model as statutes allow, and that as you continue to grow and, and are an urban county and certainly promise to be even a larger urban county in the years ahead. As we noted earlier, if you do so, to reach out to your municipalities. Municipalities can choose to be a part of the service district or not. State statute allows them to, by resolution, enable the service district to cover that area or not. But if they do want to be a part of that, we encourage you to include them in discussions. Most counties use a fire commission model in order to help administer a service district, and then obviously municipalities would need to be a part of that if they're, if they were part of that decision-making. And so it's just going to take some planning and research in order to help make that transition happen. And that won't happen overnight. We have been working with one, one county in North Carolina about three years to, to make that transition, and that's going well for them, but they've had great engagement and involvement, just as you have had in, in this component of the study and the process. But until that time comes, if you choose to do that, we encourage you to look at strengthening service levels or staffing levels wherever you can within your service delivery system. As you look at that trend line, you are having fewer firefighters responding to structure fires, and we think that's important for you to recognize and try to, to work through those systems and requests as they come forward. And then that combination of career and volunteer staffing models that you have in your system today. There are some district alignment that would be appropriate to do, and we would encourage you to take a look at those. I think your staff is aware of those, and especially I think when you're looking at any new stations that might be proposed, what makes the most sense? We've given you data and maps to show some of that. We have not made any recommendations at all to close any station, remove any station. That's not, that was not needed here at all. And in doing so, there could be some realignment of districts though to ensure that closest station response. We encourage you as policymakers to support your fire chiefs and your staff in developing these strategies. It's going to take a lot of collaborative approach and information. We've hopefully provided tools such as model contracts and being able to, to identify some areas that would, would need early attention, as well as other models across North Carolina that, that might be helpful or successful. So we, we would encourage you to look at those different areas moving forward and as you think about how to fund your system. But again, all of this is focused around continuous improvement, and what are we doing today? How do we improve? It is an incremental process. And with that, I and my team will certainly be glad to, to take any questions that you might have or anything that we could further assist with here today.
Okay, questions for Chief Grayson. I, I think I, I had jotted down a few questions as we were talking. It, it certainly was my pleasure to participate in this kickoff meeting in February, and, and now that I'm thinking about it, it's probably one of the last public meetings that I attended with, with, with good many people there before the COVID situation, but yeah, I think you may have answered most of my questions, and you know, when I was looking at the list of threats, I thought, okay, so how, how do those threats in Cabarrus County that you've identified, none of which came as a surprise to me based on the other conversations that we've had, how that compared to other counties across the state? And I think I've heard you say it's pretty comparable.
It is. It is. I think you need to recognize you're certainly an, an urban county, but you know, rural counties are suffering from the same challenges with volunteerism. But as urban counties, it's really, it, it dials up even higher. So it's just a, a concern, and it's a, it's a changing dynamic. The, our, our society is different, many needs are different, the competing needs for people's time is such that many people are not willing to volunteer today as they were in previous years. And so it's just a significant issue. You're just making that transition within Cabarrus County, but it is not unique to Cabarrus County.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that concerns me is I think that all of us truly value and appreciate the, the service and the dedication of, of, of volunteers, and when we see the things that you've described and, and we have to begin to, to take, take action to fill those gaps, I'm always concerned that, that that may make those volunteers feel like we do not value them as much as we truly do. And I, I guess that's, that's probably common as well.
Well, I think you, you're doing so many things that are good. You came when we met with the fire chiefs. Mr. Chairman, you were there, your county manager was there. You know, being able to, to show that you appreciate, let them hear that and see that, and demonstrating in your actions is certainly important and involving them. If you choose to go, for example, to, to look at other funding systems involving your volunteers and, you know, asking their input and, and engagement, and I think that certainly demonstrates that you appreciate them and you want their input. And, and we've tried to do that in this process by listening to, to needs and suggestions and recommendations.
Excellent. Commissioners, do others of you have questions or, or comments? We, we've heard a lot of, a lot of information here.
I wanted to make a quick comment, and I was going to pat the back of two of our fellow commissioners. And if my memory is correct, Commissioner Poole and Commissioner Schu were both instrumental in starting the fire program at Concord High School. And when I served with Commissioner Schu on the Board of Education, he was adamant that we continue to fund it and supported it every way he could. So to hear you compliment that program during your, your presentation, I was very pleased to hear, and it's something that we are very proud of, and, and I just wanted to give a quick pat on the back to my, to fellow commissioners for their foresight back when that program started.
It truly is, is a leading program in North Carolina. So I had the ability to serve as fire chief in Greensboro before retiring, and the competition from all North Carolina was held in Greensboro. And your, your, your high school would come to that each and every year, we would support it, but all the others looked exactly what they were doing, and their model, I've had the chance to travel throughout the state, and the, the, the model from Cabarrus County is used across North Carolina, and it's really helping to combat some of the laws of volunteerism. So for all of you that have supported it and will continue to, to support it, thank you for doing that. It's a great program.
Greg, this is Lynn Schu. I'm one of the commissioners, and you know, like Steve said, there's a lot of information that you handed out to us there, and I went through a good majority of it, sort of, you know, but anyway. Going or potentially going from a rural fire district service to a unified protection service district, what has been the overall feeling of the chiefs and the departments about moving in that direction? And if, you know, you can respond to that, how was it in other counties? Would you expect something similar to that in Cabarrus County?
Well, it certainly doesn't have to change anything with your, your departments or stations, it's just a funding model. So we did present the same presentation that, that came to you tonight. We presented last week to your fire chiefs and shared that with them so that they were aware of what we would be, be presenting today, and it'd be no surprise to them. That is used throughout North Carolina in, in a variety of models. I think there is sometimes a perception that there is, well, if you do a service district or a county service district, that means a, a county fire department. Well, only one county in North Carolina has used a county fire department model, and that's New Hanover County. The other ninety-nine counties don't use that model, so many continue to use contracting departments. It's just a different way of, of funding them, and so that, that you're able to look at the region or the, all the unincorporated area and try to balance some of that. So I think there's sometimes an initial concern, well, is this going to be anything? It takes away from that pride and that, that great service. Your data shows that your people are proud of the great service that they're giving. Your residents are saying they're getting a great service. I mean, your numbers say that, they, they demonstrate that. And so you don't want to, you don't want to mess with that. You want to continue to, to, to help support that pride and that great level of service. The service district model is simply a funding model, and it's, as many counties have just grown out of being able to fund fire service at ten cents per hundred dollars, and in some cases fifteen cents per hundred dollars. They've simply grown out of that model, and that's all North Carolina law will allow. You're not there today. You're not at a place that you've, you've reached that max situation. Some counties are. And so that's, you know, you're not in a situation of having to react to that immediately, but we would have to say to you long-term that in North Carolina, of the options the legislature has given us today, that model provides your best long-term sustainability.
Well, I appreciate your comments there, and this is something that I recall we've talked about several times over the years, as mentioned by yourself and Chairman Morris, the declining number of volunteers. And, and I, I'm thinking that one of the, one of the reasons for that, obviously people are taking, you know, more advantage of their personal time and 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 to go to school and all of that number of hours and continuing education credits and all of those things has a negative impact on recruiting volunteer firemen. And whenever, whenever and if ever it does go to, you know, the other opposite of what it is now, how will that affect the education part and the training part? Will that be the same? Or is that going to have any leniency? Or is it going to be a greater?
Well, you know, even even very urban areas, when there's a desire to do so, continue to have a volunteer component. And and for the foreseeable future, we certainly would recommend that to you, whether you use the your current funding model or even the service district model. And so recruiting volunteers, continuing to utilize everyone who's willing to volunteer and and able to volunteer. It does have a training component that's that's essential for that. It is very time consuming. The number, I think, a big change that happens, based on what I I've seen, I started as a volunteer. I still volunteer today. I would say in North Carolina that the the challenge is just as we have urbanized as a state, the calls, the call volume, the number of incidents have increased. The the more you urbanize, the more difficult it becomes for a volunteer to to serve. You know, I think that's that's a challenge. So I think there's a piece that's the the training challenge. There's a piece, how many times my call? How many times am I going to be away from my family, away from my my other responsibilities? And the days of people being allowed to go and service a volunteer and leave work to volunteer, for the most part, have come to an end. And so there's a lot of reasons that has happened since since I started in 82. There's a lot of things that have changed since that period of time. So it's it's a complicated item, but you are looking at it. And let me emphasize that is so important that you're not dismissing it, that Cabarrus County said, this is an issue. We see this trend. We recognize it. There's some things that you can do to help that and sustain it. And we've tried to provide that. Your staff has been very receptive to it. Your fire chief's been very receptive to it. Your fire chiefs care to sustain that. And that's extremely important, and we're very pleased to see that.
I totally agree with you, Greg. I thank you for being with us tonight and thank you for putting all that report together for us.
Proud to do so, sir.
Yeah, Chief, this Mike Downs, just a quick question and and totally, totally support the the improvement of the ratings on the on the districts. A lot of that rating has to do with the water, available water supply. What what are you seeing in some of the counties that are urban and then very rural on the other side? Are they making efforts to run public water and sewer? And are they restricting that just for fire protection? And then it's going to get a pretty expensive endeavor there. What what are you seeing out there? Is that alternative?
Well, it's it's certainly all the above. We would say to you that that, you know, there are some some counties that have more water supply than others, but you're not, you know, you're not unique there. There is the the insurance system, as you noted, is based on 50% from the fire department, 40% on water supply and 10% on emergency communications. That's how the rating is sliced up, 50, 40 and 10. So 40% of that is based upon water supply. So some provide that through municipal lines, water lines. Others will do that through water hall or water shuttle. And so there are ways to shuttle water and provide water in unincorporated rural areas that do not have a a water supply. So we we see all those different models. But I think it's important to note that for you as policymakers, 50% fire department, 40% water, 10% communication, there's a huge piece that is water. There's areas in other counties, and I grew up in one, in Cleveland County, where rural areas were were hydrated, if you will, but the lines were very small because it was something funded through the USDA many years ago. We see a lot of that in counties today. I don't think you suffer from some of that as some other counties do. So that's a that's an advantage that Cabarrus County has. You do have a a robust system of water supply. But again, it can be delivered where there aren't hydrants, just through water hall, a water hall model.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Anything else from you, Mr. Langer, that that you would like to add before we move ahead?
No, sir. Again, thank you for your time this evening. And if any other questions come up after this, then then please let us know. And we can reach out to Chief Grayson and get any answers that you may need.
Right, thank you. I think before before we, we will be talking about this quite a bit more and using this information provided by this study as we have talked about it quite a bit in in recent years as well, that as we address these things. I think it's one thing that I wanted to mention from a very personal standpoint is when we think about our 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 fire service and our firefighters and our departments, we we think about structure fires and our homes catching on fire. You mentioned something earlier about the the other emergency situations that they deal with. Having dealt with some some issues with my parents over the past few years, where I've had to call upon the fire department for assistance in lifting and and assisting after falls and things of that nature, that that is also a tremendous service to our taxpayers in Cabarrus County. And when 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 you're in a a very helpless situation where that you can't handle and you know that you can call upon that assistance, that is an extremely valuable resource. And the professionalism and courtesy of those firefighters and the patience. You know, I always begin by apologizing, you know, I know this is not, this is not a fire. And they're they are always extremely professional and courteous and real lifesavers in those situations. So, you know, my hat's off to all of them. And certainly you get to see that on a daily basis all across the state. And so it's a it's a very important issue in Cabarrus County. And and hopefully you have you have helped us to 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 move forward in a positive way with some of those decisions that we'll have to make. So thank you very much.
Well, it's been on behalf of my team. It's been an honor. And you really do have a great system, and we we look forward to seeing you continue to evolve and address the challenges of future. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 3.5 from Infrastructure and Asset Management. We are delighted to have Kyle Billifer to bring us an update on the Frankless Park Barn Rebuild Project. Welcome, Kyle.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. And we also have Londa Strong. We'll be able to answer any questions that the board may have. Wanted to provide you with an update on the Frankless Park Barn Rebuild Project, specifically around the site selection. We've kind of discussed this in board meetings before. We've gone through the process of looking at different sites to rebuild the barn at Frankless Park. And we've kind of gotten down to a site 1A and 1B. And I'll ask if Lauren Linker can go ahead and share the screen that shows the the map of those two locations. Site 1A is the site of the previous barn, or I guess current barn, since part of it still sits there. And Site B, if you would scroll down one, Lauren, is very close to where the actual playground currently is. And we evaluated those very closely. We used seven criteria to evaluate those between my the designer, staff, both from ALPS and Structure and Asset Management and the county manager's office, as as well as the civil engineer for the project. The seven criteria were vehicular and pedestrian access, prominence and presence, parking, a sense of place, trees, public perception and cost. So those were the seven criteria that we evaluated. And we just went through them and assigned which which location 1A or 1B would be best with. And we came up with, we had five of those subjects where 1A was the best and two of them, 1B was the best. And those those two for 1B were trees and parking. And that has to do with the proximity to the overflow parking lot. And obviously, trees has to do with the proximity of the root balls of the existing trees around the existing barn. Obviously, when you do a construction project, we'll have to dig up that slab and we'll also have to bring in utilities, and we feel confident that we will lose some of those trees. So after evaluating that, again, five of those criteria suggesting that Site 1A is the best, including cost, that is kind of what staff's recommendation to the board is in moving forward with the design. So obviously, we can figure out what exactly what we can put there and what the layout would be so we can put that back in front of the board to get some input. And it will also end up going in front of the ALPS Commission. So I would ask if if any of you have any questions about kind of the site selection process that myself and and Londa can answer.
Kyle, just to clarify, you said A? A is the recommendation?
A is the is the recommendation based on it is passing five of the seven criteria.
Kyle, just one real quick question also. I noticed on option B, you know, where you have the the drive-through to drop visitors to the new facility off, will that be incorporated some way into option A?
We had discussed, obviously, without having design done, I can't answer that exactly, but it would not be a drive-through like that. We did talk about, there's an access road that goes up to 1A now. And and I I would say that we would strengthen that access, but I would not see a loop like that. That hasn't been initially discussed. No.
Yeah, well, that's good. Yeah, that that loop is more probably more costly than upgrading the one that's already there. So I I think that's a good plan, Kyle. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kyle, the the drawing you're on there, where where are you talking about? Is it the the where is 1A?
If Lauren would scroll one one slide above, 1A is the yellow box, sir.
Okay.
And what is what side setback do we have running right through the middle of the property?
I asked the same question. That showed up on an old parcel print, and they couldn't, they couldn't get get rid of it on the aerials they were using. So I told them to to leave it. We thought it might be something with one when, basically, when it was still farmland, it still exists on one of those maps. But no, we don't have anything running there that we need to be worried about. I verified that. And I don't know if Londa wants to add anything. We did go through this through several meetings with staff to discuss this. And Londa, if you want to add anything concerning Site 1A?
The only thing that I would say is after all of our meetings and talking with Jonathan and Kyle, the the ALPS staff is definitely on board for Site 1A. There were some advantages of B, but they didn't quite outweigh, especially with the cost of 1A. So we are all right behind them.
Excellent. You know, I think that certainly I I I trust the integrity of the the process that that staff, as well as the the discussion that the ALPS board has had, making this decision and certainly support it. I think it's it's important for us to note as as we move forward in in talking about about this project and 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 what the the cost might be, which is which is considerably more than we may have originally thought, we need to make sure at every opportunity to point out that what we're proposing to replace out there is is a much superior facility than than the one that we lost in the fire. Not only will there be a lot of a lot of regulatory issues that will have to be addressed regarding ADA requirements, access to the second floor, a larger, more convenient location of restrooms, I think a a warming kitchen that that didn't exist in the previous structure. And there there are a lot of factors that that go into this that 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 are quite different from what we had there before. But, you know, it is is as devastating and painful as the loss was of the existing facility, there there's a certain level of excitement about the things that we'll be able to offer to the citizens of the county in this 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 new facility as as we work towards that. So you'll probably hear me repeat that a couple more times, but thank you for your efforts thus far.
Yes, sir. And as we begin to bring some design layouts in front of the board, I'll highlight those improvements or expansions and additions so that that the board can take, make note of those.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Kyle or Londa? Okay, thank you. And we move now to item 3.6. During the time that that we have been meeting virtually, and we've not been in the governmental center for our our regular meetings, they have, they they pretty much, they've done some major construction things over there. And when you walk in that building now, you you walk under scaffolding and you see projects at at every level where they're addressing some longstanding issues. So we're we're delighted to have Michael Miller tonight to update us on that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris, and good evening, everyone. I wanted to just give you a quick update on the governmental center skylight and re-roof projects. Since the last update on June 1st, there have been some weather delays, some other delays due to existing conditions and some unclear details in the design of the front and rear porch ceiling for wind uplift reinforcement. And these delays have affected the completion date by an estimated three to four weeks. There have also been a few roof leaks with the heavy rains in July and August that we've dealt with, which is somewhat expected, given the nature of the work. The structural steel columns and beams were placed, and the new roof has been framed around the perimeter of the commissioners' chambers. The new infill roofs above the form or over the former front and back skylights have been framed in and roofed over. The concrete curbing has been placed on the roof, and that will support the new clear story windows. The new roof structure has temporarily been dried in, and the existing roof ballast has been removed. And the new roofing material is already staged on top of the building. Unfortunately, on the morning of August 18th, there was an accident while pouring concrete on the roof in which the concrete leaked into the building around some of the new roof framing. It's the concrete was being pumped onto the roof and placed into a form. And due to the use of the concrete pump, the the concrete has to be a wetter mix in order for it to flow through the hose and in order to prime the pump. So the very first bit of concrete that was pumped onto the roof found its way through an unknown hole around some of the new structural steel framing and dropped into an individual office in the finance department. Fortunately, no one was in the office, and the damages were limited to material items and equipment. The ceiling, carpet, base molding, computer, phone and some furniture were ruined and will have to be replaced. But the contractor has taken responsibility for replacement of everything. And we actually have enough carpet on hand to cover the replacement because we plan for the possibility of some carpet damage during the process. As of today, the removal of the skylights is complete. Tonight will be the last night of demo with the removal of the last bit of existing CMU curbing scheduled to take place. The contractors are also currently working on finishing the new ceilings at the front and rear exterior of the building. And so moving forward, the next steps are to start the interior framing of the new ceiling around the commissioner's chambers this week and to start the actual re-roof probably next week. And then also next week, they're going to start to fabricate the clear story windows offsite before bringing those to be installed. Regarding the schedule, again, the project has been delayed due to weather and some unforeseen conditions with the existing roof deck that required engineering before moving on. But we're on track to be complete by the end of October. So with that, I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you guys might have.
Okay, questions for Michael? Uh, hopefully they will be able to complete this project, uh, in time for us to return to our chambers once this COVID crisis is over. So that kind of gives us something to look forward to and, and use something to, to, to pressure them with.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you very much for that update. Okay. We move now to item 3.7, our innovation and technology, uh, report. We're delighted to have Debbie Brandon bringing that to us tonight.
Uh, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here to give the, uh, September 2020 innovation report. Um, as, um, every month, um, I'm going to start off with telling you about our employee digital book that we're going to be, um, listening to this month. We're moving on to conversations worth having, using appreciative inquiry to fuel productive and meaningful engagement. Um, a lot of the books that we have, um, listened to, like last month, um, overcoming bias, we've learned that, um, good communication is key. Um, it's key to having good relationships. It's key to having a good workplace. So, um, we're going to learn about appreciative inquiry this month. Um, as an approach for discovering the best in people and teams to fuel productivity and meaningful engagement in organizations, um, at the local, national and global communities. Um, AI is one of the most widely used approaches for fostering positive change and creating innovation. In this book, we're going to explore using appreciative inquiry based, uh, conversations to discover the best in people. Um, we're going to learn how to value all voices and open a world of opportunity, uh, challenge the status quo and inspire innovative thinking and fuel productive and meaningful engagement. So I want to encourage all the employees and you two commissioners, if you'd like to join us to listen to this book and, um, interact with us on teams as we, um, move through the month. I'm also extremely pleased to announce that Cabarrus County was awarded third place this year in the Digital County Survey. Uh, the Digital County Survey is conducted annually by the Center for Digital Government in partnership with, uh, National Association of Counties. All United States counties are invited to participate in the survey, which examines the overall technology programs and plans of the county. Awards are usually presented during the NACO's annual conference held each July, but this year the awards were presented virtually on August 31st. Like I said, we came in third. Uh, last year we placed first, but, um, third is still really good. Um, we came in, um, first place was Arlington County, Virginia, and second place was Washington County, Arkansas. So we feel very fortunate to be third this year and look forward to, um, um, talking about all the innovation that we've done, um, over this past year, um, and being able to put that on our survey next year. I'd also like to recognize Todd Shanley, our CIO. In April, as you know, we were all focused on the county's COVID-19 response and failed to properly recognize Todd for being chosen for Government Technology Magazines as a 2020 Top 25 Doers, Dreamers and Drivers. This is the 19th year of Government Technology's Top 25 Doers, Dreamers and Drivers list. Only 450 people have been selected for this honor based on their energy, ingenuity and intelligence directed at improving the business of government. Some of you probably already know, but I'm going to give a little history. Todd started working here for Cabarrus County, uh, about 23 years ago. And he started as a, a GIS intern working on a, a project we had here. Um, many promotions later, Todd is now the CIO and in charge of the enterprise IT operations. Todd is now the CIO, um, and he has, um, more than just pursued new IT challenges. He's gained his master's degree and rose through the ranks. It's also, uh, one of, uh, his, um, been very persistent and consistent and passion. His efforts together with his weltering staff have now become a story of achievement, achievement. As I just said, uh, we won first place last year in the Digital County Survey, third this year, and we've been in the top 10 for the last seven years. The Digital County Survey recognizes the importance of aligning government technology and project with the county's leadership's, uh, strategic plan. Today's innovation report is on a new service that supports all five strategic initiatives of our strategic plan. No one likes to pay taxes, but tax revenues are important to funding the services that focus on the health and safety of our community, encouraging a thriving economy, sustaining growth and development and providing culture and recreation. This innovation, uh, project helps our tax collection process be more transparent and accountable, reduces fees and provides an easy, convenient contactless method for payment. My Cabco is a digital platform from Payet that allows constituents to securely transact with Cabarrus County anytime, anywhere and on their preferred device. Payet has been recognized as a GovTech 100 company consecutively over the last four years. In October, we saw a demonstration on My NC DMV by payment. And we were immediately captured by its possibilities. In November through January, we vetted the company as a service provider for integration with our existing tax system, Bytek. A contract was signed in February detailing the payment integration of services, which are provided at no charge to the Bears County government. We had a live project kickoff on the, uh, February 27th. And then we know what happened, uh, at the beginning of March, we had the COVID shutdown. Uh, we continued weekly remote project meetings and successfully launched the new system on July 31st with the mailing of the new tax bills. You may have noticed this, uh, My Cabco message on your 2020 tax bills. The tax department is the county's first department to integrate with the Payet digital platform. The tax collection department had several specific goals for a new online payment processor. Their number one goal was to reduce fees for the taxpayers. Online credit card fees were reduced from 3% to 1.85%. And the electronic check payment was reduced from $5 to $1.25. Their second goal was a shopping cart feature, so multiple bills could be paid in one transaction. So now, um, our citizens can pay more than one tax bill with only one $2 transaction fee. And the third was to have secure online payments that automatically updated our tax system is paid. We moved from a batch daily processing to automation, uh, that automatically, uh, updates the payment in our tax system, which frees our staff's time. It took a lot of remote collaboration and work from the tax department, ITS, communications and outreach, in coordination with our partners, Payet and Bytek Tax Systems, to successfully implement this project on time during a pandemic. The 20 members listed here were directly involved in weekly meetings, and there are another 10 to 15 that had some involvement in testing and configuration. Project managers often ask the team to define what project success looks like. The project team developed a vision for a successful project, added to the three goals already mentioned from the tax collection department. We needed to have an online solution that is device agnostic. We wanted simple and easy to use online interface that provides a five-star customer service. We wanted something that had significant, um, reporting and reconciliation processes that satisfied the tax and finance departments. And of course, it needed to be PCI compliant and secure. We also wanted an easy to use point-of-sale interface for our counter collections. And we wanted to create synergy for future vertical and horizontal integration opportunities. We kind of, we foresee being able to integrate with the state level My NC DMV and then also creating some other horizontal, um, integrations with other departments at the county and local jurisdictions. An added bonus features we receive, received from Payet include the ability to set up scheduled payments, to make partial payments, store receipts in your digital wallet, and to use your My NC DMV account if you already have one. In the future, we plan to provide the ability to receive digital tax bills on this platform. A convenience for constituents, but this will also save money on printing and postage. Now I'm going to try to play a video for us here that was created by our communications and outreach department. We'll see if it goes.
Tax bills have already gone out and you've probably already noticed that there is a section indicating My Cabco. My Cabco offers the ability to pay on your phone. It offers the ease of paying more than one tax bill.
Search for your bill, your property, your parcel. It allows you to search by your name and you can define your property, add it to your account. And then from there, once it's on your account, you could pay any bills related to it with just a couple clicks.
When you log on to My Cabco to make a payment, it's like having a conversation. It's just a few clicks and then your payment's made. You get confirmation to your email, which I think is really cool. And you'll get a receipt that you can use for record keeping.
First County IT has been working really diligently on trying to make our systems mobile friendly to the point where we're focusing mobile first, where it works on your phone, but it'll also work on your desktop.
It's important during a time like this for citizens to be able to make a contactless payment, and you can do that with My Cabco.
I have to thank Janice and Joe and the communication and outreach team. That's a, a, a great product that we have there to advertise our new, um, payment platform. Um, this graph shows us, um, our collections, um, online compared to last year. You can see we, um, started our, uh, new Payet platform, My Cabco, um, at the end of July. And we have collected almost, uh, $2.3 million more in 2020 than at this time in 2019. Now there's a lot of, um, things at play here with COVID and, and our, um, offices being closed. But thank goodness we have this easy to use system so that we are able to collect those, uh, taxes. We, um, have approximately, uh, 25% of the people are paying by, uh, electronic check. Um, they've paid about 2.3 million by, um, the ACH payments. And then 75% are actually paying, uh, by credit card. We took in about 1.3 million. So we have a lot more credit card, um, smaller amounts coming in and the larger amounts are being paid, uh, it looks like by electronic check. Also, almost half of the constituents, um, have signed up and, and created an account on My Cabco. So that will give us, uh, the ability to start using, uh, the, uh, they'll have their receipts that they'll be able to look in their digital wallet. Um, and it'll also starts setting the stage for us to be able to do electronic billing. And that wraps up our innovation report and I encourage everyone to go, um, download My Cabco and, um, sign in. It's, uh, conversational. It's very easy to use. We've only had maybe 20, um, people contact the help desk and only one of those were, um, asking how to log in. Um, it's been a really successful program and, uh, we, look forward to getting everyone's feedback.
Right. Thank you, Debbie. Does anyone have any, any questions for, uh, for Debbie? Well, that, that was an excellent report. Um, I've listened to these, uh, each month and they're always great. Um, I, I'll, every time I say I'm going to, uh, listen to the book, the, of the month, and then, uh, by the time the meeting's over, I've moved on to other things. I've got, I've made myself a note, uh, that I definitely want to try to, try to participate this month and, and hear that book. Uh, congratulations, Todd Shanley, uh, on that, that very prestigious award that you received. Um, congratulations to the entire staff for the digital survey award. Um, you mentioned that, that we've been in the top 10 for the past seven years. Uh, the seven years that I've served on this board, um, every, I've, I've now, I just assumed that, that that's just a norm. Every time I go to a NACO meeting that I'll get to accept an award on behalf of, of, of our IT folks from the digital survey. But it, so it's, uh, don't want to diminish that at all. It's a tremendous honor and certainly to receive, uh, first place last year was excellent. And, and kudos on the Payet app. Uh, I think that that, that truly demonstrates to our citizens that, uh, Cabarrus County is keeping up with the times as, um, you know, I've, I've used that app with the North Carolina Department of, of Transportation, uh, in the past. And I think a lot of other folks have as well. So that was a, a good progression and to reduce those, those fees uh, and make it easier for people to transact business, I think is appreciated more than probably we will hear about. So thank you very much for that report. And we move now to item 3.8. We're happy to have Kelly Sifford, uh, from Planning and Development, uh, to report on, I think, the home program. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a couple of, um, reports that are, um, from the home program, but they're, um, one is an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Um, that was, uh, something that the consortium did as a whole. We also did in 2019, an affordable housing market study. Uh, both documents are very, they're very similar. The issues are tied very closely. They are, however, two separate issues. Um, so I know you all are having a long night, so we're going to move through this really quickly. Um, in the first one, the analysis of impediments, I just want to point out a couple of statistics to you all. Um, and Lauren Linker's gonna get me to the right page. Um, so on this page, one of the things that you see is the change in unit sizes of, uh, the production of new housing. So we went from no bedroom, uh, about 0.5% in 2010 to an 820% increase. Um, while the one bedroom and two bedroom, um, those numbers went down. Um, five bedroom went up. So we have a kind of a mixed bag of what's going on for production. But, uh, having said that, it doesn't have much to do with the actual affordability of the units. Going on into the document, the median value is something else that I wanted you all to be able to take a quick look at. Um, units that are less than 50,000, uh, have a value of less than 50,000 have decreased by 11%. Um, 50 to 99% have decreased by 14% and 100 to 149 have decreased by another 14%. So you see in some of the lower values in areas of a typical affordable housing, we're seeing a reduction in how many of those units are available. So as we move deeper into this, and this is just a lot of statistics and, uh, maps and things. So I don't want you to feel like you're, you know, it's, it's something you can go back and look at, but I'm just kind of pointing out some big highlights to you. Um, affordability, the page 82, um, is where we start getting into some of the, and that's, uh, 155 for Lauren. Um, we start seeing, um, there in the top graph is Cabarrus County's, um, the first box. We are seeing 24% of our population that are 30% or more, um, of their income is being put toward a mortgage. Um, so pretty substantial, uh, issue there with affordability. Um, as we move through the document, again, there's more information in here about different details about affordability and loans and all of that. Um, we get toward the back and what I want to really talk about quickly is the actual, um, fair housing plan and what they have recommended for us. And that is to expand the amount and type of financial incentives for affordable housing, create an affordable housing trust fund, which you will see in the other document, uh, strengthen intergovernmental approaches, increase the role of state and nonprofit agencies, expand housing opportunities for the homeless, increase fair housing public education, uh, and fair housing practices to, for stronger enforcement. Um, and then they suggested- And then they suggested in some of the areas to revise codes and ordinances. They actually put that on ours. I don't think I quite agree with it because what they're looking at is increasing densities and we're kind of held hostage a little bit by the fact that we don't have water and sewer in most of our jurisdiction. But those are the general recommendations coming out of it. We will be working as a staff to start moving forward with some of these issues and maybe coming to you with some of these things as we may need to develop programs to move forward with it. A lot of that, as you could tell, was encouraging intergovernmental activity and these housing trust funds and things are also encouraging intergovernmental activity. Concord kind of took off and did something with the, a, a nonprofit kind of establishment for really supporting public housing. So I think we're going to need to kind of maybe have a larger conversation with all the jurisdictions about how we approach that. The second one is the Affordable Housing Market Study. Again, keep in mind with both of these documents, a lot has changed statistically since these were produced with COVID and incomes and all kinds of information along those lines. We, we've seen a lot of change. But at the time that this was taken, in the second document, which is again, the affordable housing, I, over, so we have over 70,000 individual households in Cabarrus County. Out of that, 17,378 were considered cost burden, which I alluded to in the other document. 9,756 of those were owner occupied and 7,622 were renter occupied units that were cost burdened. So they go on to give statistics, detailed statistics on the subject. What I would like to go to again is to the back, to the kind of the recommendation section. So they're encouraging us to, you know, form partnerships, pilots, permanent affordable housing production, you know, Charlotte's doing some of that, some different jurisdictions are doing some of that, partnering with community development financial institutions, creating community land trust to preserve affordable housing. So those are where the jurisdictions tend to buy the land and own the land, and then the units are individually owned to keep the price down. And they give some examples of that. Creating a dedicated affordable housing development fund, which is something that was alluded to in the other article. Affordable housing bonds is something they recommend, but may not, may not be floating in every area. Low income housing tax credits, which is something we have participated in already. Coming up with a specific affordable housing plan, which is something we would need to do with the other jurisdictions. Seeking more subsidies, which, you know, is maybe possible, maybe not. So overall, what we came to was that there are 4,629 low income subsidized overall otherwise affordable housing units available for the 8,830 housing, houses living in poverty. We also have an issue with 1,527 people living in institutions. Some of those will not come out of those institutions, however, some will, and they're going to need some supportive housing coming out of those. So Commissioner Honeycutt worked with me a little bit on this a while back with some of the statistical information for the affordability units and how much they were costing. The other thing we did is we actually took this and incorporated some work that Ed Hosack had done with a, a housing group task force that they had developed. And in that, I thought they did a really good job. And when I checked the numbers, it actually worked out very closely to what they had done in their groups. So I included their specific population needs. So in their scenario, they're saying in transitional housing, we need 80 to 100 beds. Single adult, so that's a supervised assisted kind of situation, 25 to 35 beds. A family shelter, 15 to 20 beds. Senior adults living independently, 50 to 100 beds. Young adults, 19 to 21, those aging out of foster care, 10 to 15 beds. Chronically homeless, 20 to 30 beds. Transitional and emergency housing, 200 to 300 beds. And workforce housing, 1,000 to 2,000 units. So these are the basic overall pieces of information you need to know moving forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. You may want to take some time and look over it and maybe reconvene another point to discuss some of the greater details. They did make a recommendation on finances. I worked with them on that because they had included Concord but not Conapolis. Conapolis is a little more complicated, a thing to include because part of it's in Rowan, part of it's in Cabarrus. But I think what the Housing Task Force did dovetailed nicely with it and kind of gave a better idea of just what we need for Cabarrus County, but that includes what all of us need to be doing with all the jurisdictions. Questions?
Questions for Kelly. Well, that, that is a tremendous amount of information in those two reports. And, you know, that is something particularly during election season. I know that, that I've been asked questions about affordable housing a number of times. And, and one of the questions that, that someone asked me very specifically was, give me the definition of affordable housing. And I had to stumble just a little bit on that saying, well, that, you know, there are a lot of factors and a lot of different situations that play into that. But I think the information that you've given us here makes it a little, a little easier to define that and to, to understand what, what we're looking at. So, you know, I'm sure that we will have many more conversations surrounding this. And, and it's not just the county, as you very adequately pointed out. I mean, all of our municipalities are having the same discussions as well. So, you know, if we can come up with a way to tackle that together, and, and we have tried to work together on a number of different projects. So, so thank you for that. Any, any other questions or comments for Kelly? But thank you for bringing that information to us.
Thank you.
And we move now to discussion items for action at our regular meeting in two weeks. And first up is our appointments to boards and committees. And of course, as I always comment, that information has been provided to you earlier based on recommendations from, from, from those various boards that have vacancies, which this month includes the, the Juvenile County Prevention Council and the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those recommendations? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to item 4.2. This is the North Carolina Association of County Commission Legislative Goals. They are going through that process as we do prior to, to the long session. And it's a, a year-long process. Typically, we have a Legislative Goals Conference where one of, one of our commissioners represents the county. I think Commissioner Schu has done it for the past couple of times where we meet with all 100 counties in North Carolina and go through those goals and sort of work through those to determine the, the, the top priorities that, that the association will present to, to the members of the General Assembly. And so I'm not, the, I think we have included in our material, our legislative goals from, from 1819. And so Lauren, did you have anything to add to that or Mike?
Yeah. That process. I will. Again, it is a two-year process and it, it comes up. The association is collecting those goals from all 100 counties. So you have the list of, of the goals that you presented two years ago. We need you to look through those, see which ones that you feel are still relevant and then, and then recommend any others that you may see that should be added to the list. We will be back at your regular meeting to discuss this again for a final approval so that we can get it to the association. And we say association, that's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, so that we can get it to them, so they can collect all 100 counties. And then as Chairman Moore says, the Goals Conference will be coming up where all of those submitted goals will be reviewed and voted upon by the representatives from each 100 counties. So you have the existing goals. We're looking for any new ones and the deletion of any that are no longer relevant. And we'll be discussing them back at your regular meeting in two weeks.
Great. Thank you. This is a really important process. I think, I think that probably all of us at one time or another have participated in that Legislative Goals Conference. And that truly is the, the roadmap of what, what our folks in Raleigh present, as well as our meeting that we, we hold on a, with our local delegation. And we, we talk about those same goals and requests with our folks as well. So, so please, please study those carefully and be prepared to, to submit any, any changes or additions, which you, you're welcome to present those to, to the county manager or to me or between, between now or at our, our regular meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. Mike, wasn't internet and Wi-Fi connectivity the number one goal from the association?
It, it is. It, the, the expansion of the broadband throughout the state. Yes, that, yes, ma'am. It is one of their major goals.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that we add that in the time of remote learning that's going on right now with our schools, the rural areas of our county. Some have, still have dial-up and some have nothing. And if we're going to support both of our school systems, our college residents that are here that are doing remote learning, those are some things that we need to look at as a county and figure out which areas of the county we would be able to address that and to include that in our goals since we know that that is the state, one of the, the big goals for the, the association. I think we need to make sure that that's included in going forward. We have lots of areas that are not connected. There's school buses and parking lots. There's hotspots that have been distributed, and yet there's still students who do not have connectivity and are struggling right now in week four of virtual learning. And so I think that's something that we need to do. And I think if funds are available, I don't know with the, all the COVID funds and everything, but I think it would be great if we could reach out to the school systems, both of them, and make sure, are they, do they have the funds that they need for hotspots, et cetera? Or are they in need of more funds at this time? The numbers from the help lines have not gone down. Don't know what that means for our school system, but at least for right now, I think if we can do something, I don't think virtual or remote learning's going away anytime soon.
Yes, ma'am. I have that written down and we'll make that happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Poole. I think that broadband connectivity has taken on a much bigger meaning with the situations that you just described that probably we didn't realize two years ago. So thanks for pointing that out. Any other comments regarding our legislative goals? Okay, then we will move to item 4.3. And this, creating grants, special revenue funds. We're glad to have Rodney Harris back to talk about that.
So this particular agenda item is intended to make our budget a little bit easier to understand for both the public and the board. And so what we're asking for here is the creation of three multi-year special revenue funds. One would be for federal grants that we receive, one for straight, state grants, and then one for other grants that we receive. We currently budget these funds in the general fund. And so creating these special revenue funds will make it easier for us to report and to track those funds instead of co-mingling them with general fund money or county money. And it'll also make it a little bit more transparent for the public in that they'll be able to see exactly where those federal, state, and other grant dollars reside. And so that's what this agenda item is intended to do.
Excellent. Any questions for Rodney? Okay, thank you very much. We will move now to item 4.4, Proposed Amendment to Parking Agreement with the City of Concord. We're happy to have Jonathan Marshall to talk about that. We saw you on top of Kelly Sifford's filing cabinet earlier, and now we're glad to see you with the historic courthouse in the background.
Yeah, the bad part about those pictures, the good part is they don't age. The bad part is they creep me out. So a little bit of background on this parking agreement, of course, it's only been since 2018 that we entered this interlocal agreement with the City of Concord, and it's related to our county parking deck downtown. And the city, of course, contributed $3 million towards that parking deck and calculating it out by cost of space, that equated to 142 spaces. 50 of those are protected or nested. And then, and just to remind you, there are a total of 90 nested spaces in the, in that deck, which are protected with their own internal gate and controls. And the reason we're revisiting this parking deck only two years la, or this agreement only two years later is it's related to some major downtown development proposals that we've been discussing. And by making some of these amendments, it grants some flexibility to the City of Concord, and we feel like it gives some flexibility to us. Keep in mind that the amendments we're discussing will only be, come into effect once you determine it's time to start charging in that deck. So once we start putting down the gates and we're charging for use of that deck, or, and of course, we'd have passes for jurors, but for the general public, there would be a charge. So it'll only come into effect when that decision is made, which has not been. What the city is asking to do is they have those 142 spaces, 50 of which are protected, and they can charge a monthly rent for once we get to that position where we're charging for the entire deck. They're asking to have those, all 142 spaces floating, so not have a space precisely designated for it, which gives us greater flexibility in use of those nested spaces. And in fact, if we choose, we can just open those up for general use. It gives them more flexibility in being able to assign some of those to some downtown developments and charge a monthly rent for the user of that space. I know County Manager Downs has some very large concerns about that because it goes from 50 spaces that they could charge rent for to 142. The primary difference is none of these are assigned to a specific space, and we know that the majority of their demand is going to be in our off-hours. So let's say I'm in an apartment downtown and I'm renting a space from the City of Concord. During the day at our peak hours, there is no guaranteed space. While they're paying that rent, if there's a space available, they can go in and out of that charge deck and use it. But if that space is used up by a juror or someone else coming downtown, then it won't be available to them. We do feel confident that it will be available at night when their primary and heaviest use will be. So I feel like this gives us, again, some ability to control those nested areas much better for the county. It gives the City of Concord better ability to assign spaces to some of these developments that are projected to occur downtown. And then the final thing I'll say is this is just step one as we start to look at some of those development proposals. I mean, you've probably seen the City of Concord has already, has already recommended or asked that you approve this, and they've approved this amendment to the agreement. But they're also considering some master development agreements for some of those larger downtown proposals. And then your part of that will come before you for consideration in the next couple of months.
Right. Thank you, Jonathan. Any, any questions regarding this for Jonathan? I will say, I have been involved in some of the conversations that we've had about this. I think it's a logical direction to go. Some of the development opportunities that are coming to pass in downtown Concord are far more positive than we may have thought when we originally created this agreement and, and this, this parking deck. So I think it, it is all positive as best I can determine.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, for Jonathan there, in thinking this thing over. We got a total of like, what, 576 or somewhere there about total?
It's a little over 600 spaces.
Okay, and then the city is wanting to have 142 that will be assigned to them, which is what they've already got. But what my thinking is now, you know, I'm just thinking out of the box, you know, can it be set up where that we charge for every spot in there? When a car comes in, they're charged, you know, obviously, when they pay when they go out, and then ante up at the end of the month to the various ones? For jurors, you know, I mean, they would have to have a special pass for jurors, and maybe even the, if the courthouse employees, if they pay, or, I just think it needs to have it maybe simplified some way. And I don't think that what you're proposing is going to be simple enough, but if it all goes in, then you can, you get the money first and you can always ante up at the end of the month based on the, the kind of ticket. I mean, I don't know how that could be set up. I, I, I don't know. I'm not, when it comes to technology, I'm not too much at that. But like I say, I'm just thinking out of the box, and so I don't know if there's any way we could do it where we could just collect it all and then send what goes to the city and what goes to the apartment complex or whatever, because that's part of their revenue. If they, whenever they build those apartments there, if they get a, a parking spot with that apartment, then obviously, they either going to pay the landlord or they're going to pay there at the, at the parking deck. But I just think there needs to be a little simpler way. I mean, maybe what you're proposing is simpler, I don't know, but it seems to me like, collect for all of them and then ante up.
And, and this does not preclude us, the county, from also renting spaces on a monthly basis, should you choose to do that? I don't know if you will, since the primary use is the courthouse. I will tell you that, and I don't know when we perceive this kind of demand, but essentially during the day, you could have 500 paying customers. Now, some of those, of course, are going to be jurors, where we're going to give them a pass to get out, but you could have 500 paying customers, which means some of those same spaces that the city is charging a monthly rent for, you're also, you're receiving a daily payment for. Because they're not assigned spaces, there will be some overlap in that. Again, that's going to depend when we get to, to that maximum demand, but by not assigning an actual space that goes with each of these and guaranteeing that, say, space 50 is your space and only your space, it allows both entities essentially to, to allocate that space for use. And we have different times. Our biggest demand, of course, is during the day with the courthouse use, and the biggest demand they see with these apartments and retail is during the evening.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Jonathan.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? All righty. We move now to item 4.5 from Department of Human Services, Energy Program Outreach Plan, and we are delighted to have Laura Light and Kim Middlebrooks with us to talk about that. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having us. I do have Kim Middlebrooks, who is the supervisor of the energy programs, on the call as well. And we'll entertain any questions that you have at the end. So I would like to present the Energy Outcome Plan for Cabarrus County for the fiscal year 21. The Low Income Energy Assistance Program, also known as LIHE, is a federally funded block grant program that is comprised of three different programs. The Crisis Intervention Program, also known as CIP, the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, also known as LEAP, and also the Weatherization Program. There are also non-federal crisis intervention programs, such as Energy Neighbor, Share the Warmth, Wake Electric Roundup, and Helping Each Member Cope. So the purpose of this plan is to assure that eligible households are made aware of the assistance available through these programs. This is done with the help of an outreach planning committee, which encompasses a variety of community agencies. The committee meets twice per year, once in September, to start the outreach planning related to the LEAP season. And then again, they meet in April to review the outcomes related to LEAP and to also plan for outreach activities for summer weather. The committee creates the opportunity for county-level collaboration to discuss and plan how to effectively reach county residents, to inform them of the services provided by the energy programs. As you can imagine, COVID-19 has had an impact on our outreach plans for this year. The committee plans to use Microsoft Teams versus having an in-person meeting for the September meeting. And also, the DHS energy workers typically take onsite applications at senior apartments. But again, this will have to be reevaluated due to COVID restrictions and state guidelines for the application process this year. So as in years past, DHS plans to work with community, the county outreach and communications department, to assist us with the preparation of outreach materials, messaging, and for distribution of the information to be publicized. This will be even more important this year, given the potential restrictions that we could be facing. Included in your packet is a copy of the full outreach plan, so feel free to take a look at that. But if you have any questions, we'll be glad to try to answer anything that you have at this time.
Okay, commissioners, questions for Laura or, or Kim? Okay, very good. Thank you very much for that presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, we will move now to item 4.6, also from the Department of Human Services, mobile, mobile technology for field workers. And we are glad to have Todd Shanley and Cheryl Harris to talk about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. So, yes, I'm also, you mentioned Cheryl Harris. Anthony Hodges is also with us, as this will impact his adult protective services. And then we have Rich Bowlin, the vice president of Northwoods with us as well. So, I come before you because tonight we have a budgeted project, but this project to take advantage of a early adopter program with Northwoods and to get it some reduced pricing, they requested that we sign a three-year agreement. That's not out of the norm for us, especially a, a technology project of this size. It will, you know, it would take us some time to get it implemented, and then after that, it would also, you know, we would use it for at least three years, no matter what we did. So, the, the big piece of this is we're taking a, a project that we, we've already partnered with Northwoods for, I believe it's been about 14 years now. So as we've worked with them on the pilot project out at DHS, we're, we're looking to expand this copilot piece to a product they call Traverse. Traverse will impact child protective services and adult protective services workers who work in the field. Both of them currently use copilot on their iPads. The, this would, this application will be a cloud-based application that runs on the Amazon platform in a FedRAMP-protected area. So all the data will be protected and that we would have the adequate security while providing and eliminating some technology issues that we've been plagued by in the past. Most of the workers would tell you that they have trouble syncing or accessing documents in the field on a regular basis. While the, the current process we have i, i, is better than the, the milk carton bucket that they would take out with all of their files, th, this Traverse product will enhance what we're doing now. So it also utilizes artificial intelligence to provide connections that, that people may not know about. So you, as people type in information about relationships, it will go back and pull that data so that the social workers will have that information in the field. They, the project will take about 10 weeks to implement, so we'll be off and running as soon as the board approves that and we get, sign off from the county manager and the attorney's approval on the contract. I'd like to ask if Cheryl or Anthony had anything that they wanted to add.
Be glad to answer any questions if they, if there are any asked.
I don't have any questions. I would just say I serve as the liaison to that board, and I would say anything that we can do to help them out in the field in that position, I'm sure it's already stressful, and when you don't have access to the information you need, I can only imagine. So anything that we can do to certainly aid them, I think is extremely important.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, it sounds like, uh, sounds like an excellent project to, to, to sign that three-year contract. Does not sound like a, a stretch to me at all. Cheryl, I, I hope that that is a, a virtual background that you have on today. If not, we have really upgraded our human services building.
I've actually asked if this could possibly be my office.
Okay, well, I see Anthony shaking. He said, no.
You, you can see my background.
Okay, any other questions or comments, commissioners? Okay, thank you all for, for being with us tonight. Okay, we move now to item 4.7, also from the Department of Human Services, Public Transportation Agency Plan, and we are glad to have Bob Bushy with us to talk about that.
Good evening. We're presenting the Cabarrus County Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. This plan was developed by NC DOT as required by the FTA for all transit agencies. They have allowed all the counties in North Carolina to piggyback on this plan so that we are unified throughout the state. It covers such things as driver training, safety, accident incident reporting, and things of that nature. Replaces our old plan that we had for many years. It's more in-depth, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on it. We're just asking see to adopt it.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, well, I think this is definitely a plus that, that we can have something consistent statewide and not try to reinvent the wheel. So thank you for your, for your efforts. Okay, we'll move now to item 4.8 from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Bid Award for County Vehicle Purchases. We're glad to have Michael Miller back with us to talk about that. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. A formal bid for seven trucks, one van, nine cars, and one SUV was advertised on August 18th. A total of two dealerships submitted bids for the various vehicles on August 26th, and after opening and evaluating the bids, is recommended to purchase the nine cars from Hendrick Toyota Scion of Concord for a total cost of $206,775. And the seven trucks, one van, and one SUV from Hillbush Motor Company for a total cost All bids received were within the total budgeted for the FY '21 vehicle budget and do include tax, tags, and fees. So our requested action is a motion to approve the bid award and to authorize the county manager to execute the two purchase agreements, one between Cabarrus County and Hendrick Toyota Scion of Concord, and one between Cabarrus County and Hillbush Motor Company, subject to revision by the county attorney. And a bid tabulation is attached, and I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you guys may have.
Questions for Michael? Michael, these vehicles, are they used in various different departments, or I was a little unclear on that?
Yes, sir. They're spread out between building inspectors, ITS, Human Services Department, and Infrastructure and Asset Management.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. And we move now to item 4.9, also from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Recommended Approval of Preferred Alternate for Courthouse Expansion Projects. We're glad to have Kyle Phil to talk about that.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. This is the second time I've had to come up for a preferred alternate for the new courthouse expansion. We found one that we missed last time. We actually didn't miss it. We addressed it, but after digging further into it, we found out that the two alternates that are available are manufactured by a subsidiary of a subsidiary of the same parent company. So following general statute, I have to come up again for this preferred alternate. North Carolina General Statute 133-3 requires performance standards to be used when specifying products. The statute also allows preferred brands of equipment to be bid as an alternate on the Cabarrus County courthouse expansion project, provided that the performance standards were approved by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. To be approved, the alternate must either provide a cost savings or maintain slash improve the functioning of a process or a system affected by the brand alternate. Approval is requested for the preferred brand alternate of the high-pressure, compact, laminate composed of wood veneer and paper fibers treated with a thermosetting resin. Initially, the design and construction team found two of these materials, but after further investigation, the two manufacturers are both subsidiaries of the same parent company. So looking in my background, that is that wood laminate veneer that we had all discussed in one of the samples that I had walked around for you all to touch. And the attachment on this agenda item goes through exactly the, the due diligence they did to determine that it was the same parent company.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Kyle? As you mentioned, we've talked about this before, so I think everybody understands. So, yes, ma'am, are you holding up your hand? No, undoubtedly not. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we move to item 4.10 from ITS, GIS Enterprise Agreement. We're happy to have Todd Shanley back to talk about that one.
Thank you, Commissioner. The, last year, you probably remember Adam Cardnell coming before you and presenting our, the Cabarrus County GIS Strategic Plan. At that time, we were in the early stages of just developing that plan, and this is just that next step in, in that plan is, is to execute an agreement with ESRI. I've got Joe Batinelli and with, he's our GIS manager. He's got a longer title than that, but that's what his, his role for tonight's going to be. And then Dom Metazik and Jay Fowler from ESRI here as well, joining us to, to kind of answer any questions you might have about this project. But the idea is that we would sign an enterprise agreement with ESRI that will allow us to utilize ma, much of their software suite without incurring additional licensing and fees. They've graduated this, this fee schedule to allow local governments to be able to take advantage of it earlier. The entry point for it was very steep and difficult for us to, to cost justify over the years. So what they have done for us is, this year is a minor increase in what we're already actually paying, and then next year, there'll be a, a next step up to 70. So our current, this current year, which we've already budgeted, would be a $50,000 cost. Next year, we'd go up to 75, and then year three, we would level out at $100,000 a year. So that will allow us to use their, their platforms and their projects to, to achieve the goals that Joe's going to talk a little bit about here in a moment. But there's a lot of things that you've seen that the GIS staff is, is working on, and the, the FIRE study earlier referenced some of Joe's hard work that he's done and, and many of the other projects that rely on that data. So not to steal any more of Joe's thunder, I'll turn it over to you, Joe, to, to do your presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen right here. So just to recap what we talked about about a year ago with Adam. In government, location is never an afterthought. It is a foundational system of so much of what we do. It plays a critical It plays a critical role. It is evident in everything from long-range planning to asset management. We saw the FIRE study. The building reports, those all occur in a location, and it matters. In every study on smart government, location and GIS are called out. This is important to us here, especially just because we are working on developing that ecosystem that produces success. And so we had an approach where we defined our needs. We moved, we're moving towards adopting those, but this is the next step in that. We have some licenses that are very costly. And this just removes the wall so that we can aggressively expand our location intelligence for the county. Some of what they previously, ESRI has previously said in their findings was the need for the digital twin, where we can show where stuff is in the county. We looked at drive-time analysis predictors using AI and RGS indoors for asset management and tracking people in the buildings. We just launched, as you remember, back in January, our map Cabarrus GIS site as a continual evolution of what we can do with GIS. Since June 1st, we've had 32,000 visitors, about almost 100,000 sessions there. Majority of these are eight to four business day workers. But we do have people hitting our site at all hours of the night. This year, with the pandemic and everything, we've been supporting the Health Alliance, doing heat maps for them so they can see where the pandemic is hitting Cabarrus County specifically. We also did dashboards for them as well to put out other information. This actually started as an RGS dashboard, but just due to circumstances, we moved it over to Power BI, in case you have any questions there. But it started out originally, if you remember, with a map of the county with the zip codes colored by how many cases were in each zip code. Location is important, but as we got further into the pandemic, that was not as helpful as this kind of information. And I would do want to point out that ESRI has been our partner during the pandemic. We reached out at the beginning to get some extra online, RGS online licenses to support Health Alliance. And they have a disaster recovery team that, like, I just put in a request and they sent me 10 licenses for six months so that we can get up and running. Moving forward, we have software upgrades planned. ESRI provides us a technical advisors to make sure that we can implement the technology in the best way and most efficient way possible. We're always looking at more automation in order to improve the county processes. And a lot of that will result in more dashboards, story maps to help explain the data in the dashboards. And they just reached out to me today to, one of the things that this purchase enables us to get is RGS Hub Premium, which allows us to do more interacting with the public as far as tools for the pandemic, small business recovery tools that we could launch, and interacting back and forth with the public. And that's kind of where we're at. But we appreciate your time today. And we are ready for any questions.
Sorry, I'm just muted because Mr. Miller's project is going on above my head. There was a little bit of drilling, so. Do the board have any more questions or any further? So that would be a three-year agreement that we would be signing with them.
Right. Questions, commissioners, for Joe or Todd? Okay, well, I think that probably this is a little bit more evident, you know, since the presentation we had a year ago. And now that we have participated and seen those heat maps that the Health Alliance has used during the pandemic and the dashboards, and having participated in those meetings as well, I've heard from that side of the fence, from our Health Alliance, how much they have appreciated the assistance that our IT department has offered to them. And it makes it real clear the importance of having these capabilities. So thank you for bringing that to us. Okay, and we'll move now to item 4.11 from the Sheriff's Office, North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program and the Bike Safety Grant. We are happy to have Chief Deputy James Bailey with us to talk about that. Welcome, James. And you are muted, James.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. I've actually got two grants. This first is a Bike Safe Grant. To give you a little bit of insight on the Bike Safe Grant, the state will provide $5,000 to the county to help us assess and advise motorcyclists on how to be safer users of our roadways. Between October of 2019 and last month, we hosted nine classes with a total of 55 total students. And to just put it in perspective, our Bike Safe group through the Sheriff's Office accounted for about 10% of the classes and 10% of the students throughout the state. So they're very active. This grant is for $5,000 with no local match on this particular grant. So this is just to get your blessings, to have this money sent over and to fund this program for another year.
Excellent. Thank you. How many years have you folks participated in this program? I know we've heard discussion previous years.
About five years? Yeah, I've got one of the instructors in here. Yeah, about five years so far we've been doing it. And one of the neat things with Bike Safe is they actually go out on the roadways, watch them drive, watch them maneuver, watch them take turns, try to give them some insight on how they can be safer on their motorcycles. And again, I think it's been a very vibrant program. They've reached so far over 300 riders in total just through some public outreach, attending some bike events. So it's a very vibrant program. And again, the state, when we do these, we get points through the Governor's Highway Safety Program. So those points, when we build up and cumulatively get enough points, we can get radar equipment, we can get different things through the state Governor's Highway Program. So we get the funds for this, and also we get the points. So we're allowed to, it allows us to get some extra equipment that we don't necessarily have the budget for, for our traffic units.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, and not for Deputy Bailey, but just to close the loop on what we talked about earlier, Rodney. So this money will go into the newly created fund just for ease of tracking? So we can see it's just easier to track? Is this the example of go into that fund?
That is correct, and I apologize for the construction noise about my head. Yes.
Don't ever apologize for that.
It's a sound of progress.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Chief Bailey. Blake, you got something else?
No, no, I just, I wanted to make sure that I was tying the two things together. And I thought that's what we were doing, so, great.
Good job. Thank you, Blake. Chief, we had a guest speaker. Probably you guys might remember what it was, but he was part of a biker group. And he was talking about citizens that mow their yards, that throw the grass out on the streets. Now, to further this, you know, with bike protection and that kind of thing, do we have any type of, what are we doing about that? Are we able to write citations for people that mow their yard and throw the grass out in the road, which creates a hazard for bike riders? Or could that be part of this Bike Safe Grant?
Right. Well, again, I've got one of our, actually one of our motor unit folks in here. He handles these classes. What they're trying to do right now is educate, because there's a big difference when you're talking to someone on Union Street about throwing their grass out in the middle of the road. And if you're out on Clutch Road, you know, the rural folks just tend to, you know, they have a different lifestyle. We try to go out and educate. So in other words, you know, citations are the last things that we want to do. And part of the second portion of this, this 4.12, is the education part of what we should be doing as citizens to make sure that we're not putting these riders in any kind of jeopardy. I know in speaking with him that they've addressed some issues that they've seen with people mowing their grass. But again, fairly daunting job to try to get everyone in compliance. But one of the things, again, that they're going through with these motorcyclists is how to deal with these situations when you do come up on a roadway with debris in the roadway, things that are being put in the roadway that could cause an accident. So again, it's an education portion of it. And then there's also the actually assessing of the skills and giving them some ideas on how to be safer when they're on the roadway. So, yes, we do try to address those as often as we can. But again, you know, it's, you're, we're really trying to focus on the educational portion of it more so than the citation part of it. But yes, we do try to address it when we can.
And I agree. That's a good way. I didn't mean to be so stern, hey, give them a ticket, you know?
No, no, not at all.
That's not what I meant. But what I'm trying to say is, though, is, you know, education is a big part of it. And I wonder, I'm just thinking, of course, everybody right now, particularly DOT, they're strapped, you know, because they've cut projects and this and that and all. But it looks like to me, though, that there ought to be some help for DOT with some sign, you know, some verbiage to put on the railroads to help bring people aware, which could be part of the education process.
Yeah, there is actually a general statute against that kind of action where you're discharging grass out in the roadway. A lot of people don't realize it, because again, we've lived out in the country and many of us, and for years and years, there was really no educational portion to it whatsoever. So one of the things that the traffic unit's trying to do is attend some of these community events, talk to people about how to be good stewards of our roadways and to make sure that we're trying to get the educational piece out. It's just, it's really just never existed up until about a year ago.
Well, I agree with you, Chief, and I appreciate all you do, not just the city, you know, but for the county as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move to the next item? Okay, Chief Bailey, you're up again.
All right. This is for a similar grant to the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. This is for the continuing funding of the traffic unit that was originally approved by this board last year. This is year two of that agreement. This will require a local match of $56,898 with the grant funding 132-764. So it's about a 70-30 split on year two. Just to give a little insight, since the unit was created with this grant through October of 2019, October 2019 through August of last month, August of 2020, the unit conducted 1,849 traffic stops, performed three DWI checkpoints, 19 seatbelt initiatives, one license check. Those have accumulated into 2,412 traffic or criminal violations due to those stops. Again, the criminal charges account for more than we have traffic stops, because there could be stops where there are multiple charges with each traffic stop. So 1,849 traffic stops with 2,412 traffic and criminal violations from those stops. They've done six presentations at our local high schools, dealing with distracted driving. They did the Safety City at the State Fair, and they have reached 4,800 high school-aged drivers, talking with them about traffic safety, how to be better drivers. Distracted driving really has been an emphasis on this team. They've also reviewed the 10 top crash intersections. They've identified them. And they're doing daily and weekly enforcement of those intersections, finding that speed and stoplight violations are the two major factors involved in these traffic accidents. The distracted driving has not been on the state rec reports. So they're trying to get some data for you next time this comes due so that we can have a few more numbers for you as far as distracted driving and what percentage of that is, how many percentage of our traffic accidents are due to distracted driving? So, but again, this grant does have a $56,898 local match with the grant funding 132-764. So hopefully, if you have any questions, I can answer them. I've got, again, one of our members of our traffic units in here with me. So I may have to look over at him and get some advisement. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay, questions, commissioners? It sounds like it's getting a lot of bang for our buck. Go ahead, Commissioner Hinekut.
I just have a question. Where you said the top 10 locations were the accidents, and that you're doing the checks and all, on those, are there any talks or opportunities where the intersection in some way can be changed or that place? Or is it just a matter of monitoring it for the safety purposes?
Most of these intersections, we're finding, again, that the two major factors are speed and stoplight violations. It's, most of the intersections, for all I'm being told, are fine. It's just getting people to slow down and getting people to, when they see the orange caution light that is getting ready to change over, to actually, you know, press the brake pedal instead of the gas pedal. But again, I think what's more important, we can throw out numbers. They have really done a lot of work on the educational piece, which again, just due to staffing and call volumes, you just don't really get that opportunity to do the educational piece of it. So they've really been, you know, again, 4,800 school-aged drivers. I mean, that's your tremendous amount of students that these guys are touching and reaching. So, I mean, we find value in that. And so we're very proud of those numbers. And again, this is the first year that the unit's been organized. So we're hoping that we can have an actual chart that we can display at the next time this comes due to show you, hopefully, that we see some reductions in some of these numbers comparative to the years prior.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you for those presentations, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, we move now to item 4.13 from Tax Administration, 2010 Write-Off of Real and Personal Outstanding Taxes. We are happy to have David Thrift with us to talk about this item.
Good evening, commissioners. General Statute 105-378, titled "Use of Remedies Barred," prevents the tax collector from exercising any new enforcement remedy to collect for tax bills that are more than 10 years old. September 1st, 2010 is when our 2010 tax bills became due, so those are now 10 years old. And because we cannot enforce collection on those, we ask the board every year to write, to allow, to write off those tax bills. What I'm asking for tonight is a motion to approve the write-off of real and personal outstanding taxes from 2010 totaling $439,129.44. You have to answer any questions if you have.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. I've been thinking about this ever since I looked at that write-off report. You remember a number of years ago, when we start, we had to pay our taxes on our vehicles and all of that prior to being able to get a tag, you know, for our cars and things. And then that brought our tax collection rate for those vehicles up to somewhere excess of 99, even in some cases, probably right at 100%. Now, trying to compare that to what we're talking about here with the real estate, personal property taxes, and not a lot you can do about the personal property taxes, because that would be household goods and things of that nature, whatever it consists of, you know, that consisted with personal property. But it seems like to me that there needs to be legislation, and there might even be some legislation out there pending right now that, David, you might know about, that would, because the tax for the real estate is on the real estate. Is that not right?
Yes, sir.
And the real estate, the real estate's still where it was unless it's torn down or whatever. But it seems to me like, though, and just then again, thinking out of the box, that there needs to be some type of legislation out there that if there's taxes due on real estate, then they can't get a clean title to it until those taxes are paid. Now, that may seem way out for some of you, but I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, $436,000 is a lot of money. Now, I know we can't do a lot about situations like ambulance Now, I know we can't do a lot about situations like ambulance fees and other things like that. There's not a lot you can do about that. But something like this though, where there can be something done, it will not allow a person, a buyer or seller to ever have a clean title until those taxes are settled. So I'd like to hear some of the other Commissioners' comments on that, maybe in particular Diane, you know, you've been doing real estate for so long, you know, maybe you can, maybe comment or some of the others could maybe comment as well.
I guess one of the questions that I would have is by this being 2010, probably a lot of these maybe are on vehicles, because this was before the new system was in place. Is that, would that be correct?
So a majority, a great majority of this is personal property tax bills. There are some real estate taxes involved here. Usually those are instances in which we have scenarios where we have an unknown owner. So we may have a, a piece of real estate that we can't identify the owner of that real estate for, for one reason or another. There may be situations where even though we do have the enforcement capability of foreclosure on real estate, we don't always take that option because of the cost to do that. It's just more than, than the benefit perceived from, from taking that step. So there are some instances in which there are real estate tax bills that we end up writing off. I think you're, you're suggesting Commissioner Shu, that it's a good one that we'd like to potentially see some legislation for, but that's not something that I, that I think is in the works right now. I think it has been discussed before. There may be some options to pursue there.
Yeah. And see, and with this, just one quick comment, David, and with what we're talking about, the night's write-off, obviously it's not going to help us there. But Commissioners in years to come and, and tax administrators like yourself in years to come, if that type legislation was in, you know, was input, in place somewhere, then it obviously would reduce the number of write-offs and the dollar of tax dollar write-off.
Yeah, I think from the administration standpoint, we're, we're definitely in favor of anything that helps support the collection of taxes. We, we take every effort that's provided to us by, by statute. You know, a lot of these being 10 years old, we, we've made a lot of efforts over the years to try to collect these. So I can tell you that these aren't, these aren't tax bills that have just been sitting without any intention. We have taken efforts. There's just, there are situations in which tax bills are uncollectible. But by the way, the system design, ownership can be a factor. We, we have to assess and bill taxes on all property. Sometimes even if we know that down the road, those will be uncollectible, we still have an obligation to do that. So there's always going to be some portion of this, but the more we can reduce the amount we have to write off, the better off we will.
Thank you, David.
And Lynn, to your point from the real estate piece, when, you know, when we go to a closing, the attorney certainly searches to see if the tax bills are paid. But I mean, that, that obviously is not going to catch everything or make everything work.
Well, there are some parcels where the title search is so screwed up, you can't even tell who the owner is. To David's point on those, you also have a number of parcels where it's gone through an estate and there was never an, or rather the person has died and there is no estate set up to even know who the heirs are. And usually in those situations, the property isn't worth that much. And to try to figure that out from a, from a title perspective, can cost more than the actual taxes, taxes. And I think that's part of what David's talking about too. So you just have some parcels where, where you would think on real estate, you could always determine that and collect the taxes, but you just have somewhere, just because of those kinds of situations, it's just, you're just not going to be able to do it.
David, e- e- even if the 10-year time period did not exist, what would be the likelihood that you'd be able to collect something that was 10 years old anyway?
I, I think it would be pretty unlikely due to the fact that we, we do, we, we've gone after these tax bills for, for all 10 years that we've had them in our responsibility to collect. So I think these are at the point now where they're, they're fairly uncollectible.
Yeah. So the, the 10 years is a good, I mean, you know, that you, you gotta cut it off somewhere and that, that, so, okay. I was just, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I think the 10 years is a fairly reasonable amount of time, but for the amount of enforcement actions that we can take. You know, if we can't, if we can't get that money in a 10-year timeframe, then it's, it's a fairly uncollectible tax, especially with the, the staff and the resources that we have and the ability that we have to collect those taxes. Our, our staff does a great job and we're very persistent. And, you know, if they go for 10 years without being collected, I think that's a fairly good indication of collectibility.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments for David? All right. Thank you, sir. We move now to the approval of our regular meeting agenda, which you all have a copy before you. I don't think that we've taken any action tonight that would impact any of the items on our meeting. Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Honeycutt?
I do not see 4.5 on here, the DHS Energy Programs Outreach Plan.
It was.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it was added late, so it may not be on there. And that is my fault. We will get that fixed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we approve the regular meeting agenda with the one correction of item, I think you said 4.5, that was mentioned by Commissioner Honeycutt. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Keiger. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have a need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 4.
Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second? Okay, motion by Commissioner Shu and a second by Commissioner Honeycutt, that we go into closed session. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes and we now are in closed session. I will mention for the benefit of our television audience, immediately following this meeting, there will be a new episode of Out and About in Cabarrus County aired. This episode is, this will be the premiere edition. It features Commissioner Honeycutt talking with Marcella Beam about our community needs assessment process. So I would encourage everyone to, to stay on channel 22 and take advantage of, of that Out and About in Cabarrus County. We want to thank everyone for joining us tonight and we are now in closed session. Commissioners, you'll need to close out of this and, and use your link to go back into the closed session. Thank you.
We'll be talking about what North Carolina Department of Transportation is doing in Cabarrus County. Could you sort of bring us up to speed as to where we are with this project here on the ID?